Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you all are able to join us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the clerk, who's going to read a notice and some other things. Madam Clerk?
Yes, this meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council will be present at this meeting through electronic means, as will all members of the public. Public comments will be accepted virtually and also at
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and call roll, please?
I will. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as we discussed prior to going on the air, could you just make a brief announcement about our technical situation?
Yes, if anybody's watching on cable TV that's used to watching on the live stream on our website, the live stream is down. But we have provided a link so that folks can actually join us directly in this meeting. So that link is where you would usually watch the live stream, and it'll bring you right into this meeting. And when you join us, if you do join us, please just put your mic on mute and enjoy the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. So let's now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And Cindy, do you happen to have the flag we can put up for all to see? All right, so if you all, no matter where you are, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would greatly appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So let's move on to the receipt of public comment. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Make sure my mic's on. Yes, we did receive a number of comments from the public. For the budget and CIP, the Gresham Place Homeowners Association Board supports the plan for a public facilities improvement project at North Washington Street in the Planning Opportunity area. Chris Machelli of 138 Rolling Trace, president of the Whittier Park Homeowners Association, supports funding for sidewalk improvements in Whittier Park, as do David and Paula Radloff of 110 Smallwood Way. Stephanie Amoroso asks that any extra money in the budget be provided for remedial education or return to taxpayers because they never received educational services. As far as the noise ordinance, Sally Cole, executive director of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, urged council to reconsider the decibel levels for the zones that include restaurants and other commercial enterprises because it was crucial to the livelihood of businesses that a reasonable level of noise be allowed. Joshua Comanants asks that council pay attention to the location of venues that provide live music in relation to their distance from residential areas and not merely look at how the business is zoned. Jen Smith from Park Towers asks that outdoor live music not be allowed at any time. Actually, I have this under noise ordinance, but the TJ Elementary School Give Day ambassadors provided an overview of their work, and they're actually joining us tonight to speak during public comment. And that is what we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Well, let's move on to the receipt of public comment. And who's first up, Madam Clerk?
And we do have the Give Day ambassadors.
All right. We are so excited to have you all with us today. I don't see you on the screen just yet, but would you all like to introduce yourselves? Can we pull down the agenda, maybe so we could see our speakers?
And I think Ms. Teis was on.
Yes, I'm here. And Ms. Cheka is actually going to start us off this evening.
Great. Well, thank you. We can't wait to hear from you all.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
All right, perfect. Well, good evening. My name is Carrie Cheka, and I'm the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program at Thomas Jefferson Elementary. And I'm honored to be here tonight to talk briefly about the amazing work that happens each year at TJ through the FCE PTA-sponsored Give Day service learning experience and how it aligns so beautifully with the IB mission of developing, inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help create a better and more peaceful world. In the primary years program, a key outcome for students is to take action. So every day, we strive to develop students who choose to act and respond to their learning and inquiries, and students who want to make a positive difference and bring about a positive change in their own community and beyond. The 32 fifth-grade ambassadors who participated in Give Day this year did just that, as you'll hear in a moment. Not only did they take action, but they exemplified our learner profile attributes and what it means to be caring and a communicator, open-minded, and reflective, to just name a few. In addition, the ambassadors had the opportunity to host guest speakers from the community to help students deepen their understanding of each group's important mission. And for the first time, the fifth-grade ambassadors got the opportunity to partner with mentors from George Mason High School Give Day Club. The Falls Church community continues to amaze me by the way they pull together year after year to support these young ambassadors' mission of giving back. I am so proud of what they were able to accomplish this year. So please allow me to introduce Kathleen Teis, who along with her team organized this experience and made all of this possible during a global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. That's awesome.
Thank you. I'm Kathleen Teis. And in February 2020, when I was the elementary PTA president, we looked ahead and scheduled 2021 Give Day, assuming it would go on as usual. Little did we know that in less than a month, the lives of our children would be turned upside down in a way we never imagined possible. Living through the constraints of the COVID pandemic, it quickly became clear that we would not be able to undertake Give Day as the massive in-person event that our FCCPS community has come to know and love. Rather than push pause, our Give Day Chair Chrissy Henderson and the team of ambassadors helped to completely re-envision the event. Our fifth graders were divided into five teams, along with the help and guidance of George Mason High School Give Day Club students, many of whom participated in the first Give Day six years ago. I'm so, so very proud of the 32 students and how they maintained the spirit of Give Day and undertook some very ambitious projects in our month-long service. They will now highlight how they made a difference in our local community, starting with Ms. Ava.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Ava Rosenbusch, and I am a Give Day ambassador at Thomas Jefferson Elementary. In case you didn't know, Give Day stands for Get Involved, Value Everyone. This year was hard because we had to do Give Day online. We split up into five groups, and each group did different community outreach and fundraisers for their group. And you will learn about those tonight.
Great. Who's up next?
Next, we have Noah.
All right.
Okay. Hello, I am Noah Mayer, and I'm a fifth grader. I was in the organ transplant awareness group for Give Day this year. My sister Mia is one of the high school mentors. We learned all about organ transplant and donation when we interviewed Erin Keating, a parent in the Falls Church community, who donated her kidney to one of our teachers, Mrs. Faith. We also learned from Mr. Lucas McCann, one of a husband to one of our other teachers. We also held a bake sale to benefit patients in need at Georgetown Hospital. We raised over $800. We also helped with a blood drive that generated blood donations from for Inova with over 30 donors. I learned so much, including what organ donation is and how I can help the community.
Great, thanks, Noah.
Okay, Margaret?
Hi, my name is Margaret Ashbrook, and I was a fifth-grade Give Day ambassador in the animal welfare group. Together, we successfully raised $500 through the lost dog fundraiser, Cafe fundraiser, for the Lost Dog and Cat Rescue Foundation. We also collected five SUVs full of pet food through our neighborhood pet food drive for the Animal Welfare League of Arlington. We would like to thank our community for helping us achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Aria?
Good evening, City Council members and the Falls Church City community. My name is Aria, and I'm part of the Give Day Art and Uplifting the Community Group. As a part of this group, one of our accomplishments was that we designed and installed an art display at TJ Elementary. We used put-in cups that snap into the fence and created designs that remind people to smile every time they pass by. We also launched a Make Someone Smile campaign to inspire simple acts of kindness and gratitude for teachers, neighbors, friends, and family.
Great, thanks so much.
Okay, Eliana?
Hello, I'm Eliana Henderson. I'm in the Baccalaureate Group. And here to tell you about what we did. We did a coat drive and collected over 100 coats and dozens of winter accessories. We donated them to the students at Timberland Elementary. We also hosted a bingo night fundraiser. We collected over $750, which we used to purchase grocery carts for families at Timberland Elementary and families struggling in the Falls Church City community. Good evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
This is Simon.
Hi, Simon.
Hello, City Council. I'm here to talk about the Food and Security Group. In one day, we made over 2,400 power packs, and they went to Food for Others. They were donated by over 150 families in our community. And the event took place on MLK Day of Service. And I thought Give Day was super fun and a great way to help the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours. That's wonderful.
And Ryan?
Hello, my name is Ryan Plangin. And as you just heard, we were able to help a lot of different organizations this year. Being a Give Day ambassador was a lot of fun, and it gave us a chance to really help the community during COVID. We had a lot of, we had a lot of help from our high school ambassadors and our parent volunteers. We're really grateful for their, for their help and the support of the whole community. Without it, we would not be able to do this.
Thank you, Ryan. Good job.
And that's what we have for you tonight. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Well, thank you all for your service. You're doing so many wonderful things in our community. We are so excited and proud of all the great things you're doing. You're in fifth grade, and you're already doing some extraordinary things. So we are so happy and pleased and proud of all of you and all the great work you're doing. So thank you so much. I don't know if anyone else on council has anything they'd like to ask or say, but I know we're so excited you took time to join us, and more importantly, all the great work you're doing for our community. Yes, Ms. Hiscott?
I just wanted to echo the thanks of the mayor to all the work that you all have done. My day job is with the Falls Church Education Foundation. And so this is what I do professionally, is fundraise and try to think about how to help others. And I really can learn so much from what you all have done right here in our community and our surrounding area. So thanks for sharing each of them with us tonight. And I know before long, you all will be those high school ambassadors because it was just yesterday that those high school ambassadors started this program. I can't believe it's been six years, you said, since this started. So thank you for all of your work and for your leadership in our community. And we can't wait to see what you're going to continue to do. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, guys, I just want to thank you. I've got three kids in the school system, too. And guys are an inspiration for what you've done. So keep up the good work. It takes involvement and volunteerism like this to keep the city running well. So keep it up. Hope to see you guys on boards and commissions one day as adults. Thanks so much.
All right. And again, Noah, Ava, Margaret, Aria, Eliana, Simon, Ryan. Great job. Thank you all again for coming out, and we look forward to seeing you guys soon, okay? So thank you all. Thanks for coming and joining us tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So next up on the agenda is the Planning Commission's annual report. Although before we get to that, I guess I'd just like to make note that today is International Women's Day. And we've got some pretty exceptional women on this call, some of which just left us a moment ago and we just heard from. But I just want to take note of that. Our council colleagues and senior levels of staff here on city government, on the school board. The city is blessed to have just some extremely impressive women in leadership roles. And I also want to mention the Vice Mayor, who's been posting the Women of Falls Church, some of the impressive Women of Falls Church on the Facebook page. And I don't know if it's from Live Local, or I can't recall, but a lot of great stories there. So I want to thank you all and congratulate you all on this important day. So Vice Mayor Conley, do you want to give a shout out to the location of the postings you've been making?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor Tarter. And thank you for that recognition of International Women's Day. So there's something every single solitary day of this month, and it's in a lot of places. It's on Facebook, it's on Instagram and Twitter, and even LinkedIn. It's in the morning announcements, and we're recognizing historic women every day, historic women who had something to do with the founding and growth of Falls Church. And we're also recognizing entrepreneurial women who own businesses right now in Falls Church. And today, I even put out a blog post recognizing all the women in elected, appointed, employed, and volunteer leadership in the city of Falls Church. So as Ruth Bader Ginsburg said, "Women belong in all the places where decisions are being made." And Falls Church is a really good example of that.
All right, well, thank you. Our hats off to you and the rest of the women here in leadership. All right, so let's move on to the Planning Commission Annual Report. Who's going to be taking the lead on that?
I think Mr. Rankin is here.
Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Conley. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hard act to follow with those Give Day ambassadors. They're doing a great job. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to present the Planning Commission's Annual Report for 2020. Last year, I gave you the 2019 report on February 24 in council chambers. And then three weeks later, we held a Planning Commission meeting in chambers with several of our members participating via phone as a precaution as the threat of the pandemic was starting to become more clear. And we have not met in person since that time. For the year, we met 20 times. 14 of those were virtual. After our last in-person meeting on March 16, we did not meet again until May 20, which is an unusual gap between meetings for us. But by July, we were back to our normal pace of meeting twice per month. As you know, having everyone participating in meetings virtually can be challenging, and with much of the staff working from home as well, we probably did not make as much progress last year as we had hoped. That said, everyone adjusted to virtual meetings pretty quickly. The staff worked hard to keep critical items moving forward. And I think ultimately, we accomplished quite a bit during the year, the details of which are outlined in our report that you have received and I think is up on the screen right now. One thing that took a hit due to the pandemic was our speaker series, which is where we get outside experts to join our meetings and give us a presentation on a relevant topic. However, as we got in the hang of the virtual meetings, we realized that one upside was it would be easier to invite speakers who would not have been able to make it to our meetings in person. So in the fall, we had a presentation about housing needs and challenges from Jenny Schutz of the Brookings Institute, and then a presentation about the Biophilic Cities Network from Tim Beetley and J.D. Brown of the University of Virginia. Both of those presentations tied nicely into two big themes that have merged on the commission, which are environmental sustainability and diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's in the city. In addition to our normal work on the CIP and subdivisions, we endorsed the final draft of the West End Small Area Plan. We recommended the approval of the Broad and Washington Special Exception Project. And we weighed in on the ongoing development of the West Falls Church Special Exception Site Plan and the Special Exception Entitlement Process. We approved the site plan for the 120 East Fairfax Street Project, known as South Gate 2, which is looking like it's nearing completion. And we also approved a couple of site plan items related to the construction of the new high school, which is now open. Unfortunately, as I'm sure you all know, 2020 was a pretty rough year, and we did not get to some of the items we had hoped to, such as updates to a couple of chapters of the comprehensive plan, among other things. I will say that the planning staff, led by Paul Stoddard, managed to adapt quickly to the new working landscape and kept all the critical items moving forward. While we wish we could have gotten more accomplished last year, I'm proud of what we were able to get done and thankful for the staff's hard work and dedication. Let's hope this year brings it into the pandemic and allows the Planning Commission to get back to in-person meetings soon. And that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Rankin. We appreciate it, and you guys have done some great work over this past year and years beyond, before that. There's so much going on planning-wise in this city, and your all's efforts are so critical to seeing those projects come to fruition, and they are doing that right now. So we thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and open up to questions and comments from my colleagues. Does anyone have any comments or anything they'd like to say to Mr. Rankin or comment on the Planning Commission's efforts? All right, well, this surprisingly quiet City Council group right now, which is fine. So once again, I want to thank you, and we're going to be working very closely with you. Looks like we just did have a hand get raised. But I know we're going to be working very closely. There's a lot going on. The 10 acres is going to be a lot of heavy lifting, and there's a lot more on our plate coming up here. Let me see whose hand that was, and I will go ahead and recognize them. Looks like it may have come down. All right, well, it looks like we don't have any. Well, maybe we do now. Hang on just a quick second.
Trying to hit the hand button, sorry.
The joy of virtual meetings.
It's not, it's not coming up. Looks like, oh, there he is. Phil Duncan has got a comment or question.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just a technical question. Is the report available on hyperlink off the minutes? I'm just looking at the agenda. I'm sorry, the agenda, not the minutes.
I didn't see it when I looked in Verenicus earlier, but...
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I was looking for that, too, and it doesn't seem to be linked. But I'll get that up there as soon as we can get it there. And I'll email it out to council.
Great, okay. Thank you for all your hard work, Andy. You guys have done a great job.
All right. Well, again, Mr. Rankin, thanks again. We'll be hearing from you plenty more, I'm sure, and we appreciate all your efforts. So thanks for coming out this evening.
Sure thing.
All right, let's keep on moving. And we are now on to council requests. Are there any council requests before we get started with the business for the report of the city manager? All right, let's move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Shields? Oh, Mr. Snyder. Before we do that, Mr. Snyder's got a comment. Dave?
Sure, thanks very much. A couple of things. I know there's some concern about the doomsday metro budget that would call for a significant dropping off of services in FY '22 and the third quarter, including a potential closing of metro stations. I just wanted to make it clear that I've spoken publicly against that, and the hope is that with the federal legislation, if it's adopted and signed, may prevent the necessity for closing those stations. But I want everyone to understand that I've advocated both publicly and privately on behalf of the city and our interest with Metro. We'll be submitting formal comments, and I hope to be testifying on Wednesday in the open hearing focused on Virginia. Secondly, the Board of Directors of the Council of Governments is proceeding with a discussion of DC statehood, and I hope we'll discuss that at some point in the very near future because I'd like to represent the city's views. Finally, a big thank you to all involved in our two presentations this evening, the students, the teachers, the parents. Wonderful job. It's what the IB program is all about. And to the Planning Commission, thank you so much for all of your work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Ms. Hardy?
Thanks, Mayor. Just so you know, the hand raising and unmuting is pretty laggy for me tonight, so it might be a little while before it shows up. But anyway, I wanted to make sure the city manager saw one of the comments received about sidewalks. And I think this one in particular was about Whittier. But in general, I think since as warm weather approaches, people are going to be out and about more often, and people are going to be making requests for sidewalk improvements. And so it was probably real late to the FY '22 operating budget, Mr. Shields. But I wanted to make sure that that was on our to-do list for DPW to do the annual grinding and sidewalk repairs.
Yeah, thank you for that, and that is an annual contract. And so I will follow up with Mr. Bradley on that request. And I don't, you know, they have a designated part of the city that they tried to attack each year and sort of work it. And I don't know whether that's in that list, but if not, then we'll see if we can address that specific concern.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other comments from council or council requests? All right, Mr. Shields, you're on.
Well, thank you, Mayor Tarter and members of council. It's my pleasure to stand before you tonight to present the proposed FY '22 budget. And I'm joined by my colleague, Dr. Peter Noonan, and his colleagues on the, on the school board. And they will also present the school board's request to the City Council that is factored into the budget that's before you tonight. The budget is, a hard copy of the budget is in your mailboxes, and a PDF of the budget has been posted on the city's website so people can dig into that very detailed and lengthy document that has tons of information about the city as a whole, as well as the specific budget initiatives that I'll summarize at a very high level tonight. It's been noted, it was noted by Mr. Rankin earlier just about his experience last year when they gave their annual report and what happened after that. And since we are right on the anniversary of our shutting down and social distancing for COVID, I do feel compelled to just note a couple of the amazing things that have happened over the past year, the amazingly difficult things, but also amazingly inspiring things that we've been able to accomplish together. And, and I'd like to do that because it factors so much into the way that we're thinking about FY '22. It is deeply informed by the calamitous events of the past year, as well as the great opportunities for progress on social equity, as an example, that we hope to follow through on and change ourselves as we go forward and sustain that change into next year. So hopefully, as you review this budget, you'll see that we're making steps in that direction. And I really look forward to your input into it. But I do want to just note a few things, some of the unsung heroes over the past year from our IT services who worked around the clock to get our government working in a virtual environment, getting all of our employees outfitted to work from home. virtual environment, getting all of our employees outfitted to work from home. Our city clerk, you know, when we have issues with these virtual meetings, you know, we lose sleep over this. She loses sleep over this. She's very dedicated to making sure that these meetings work successfully. When we were standing up all of our boards and commissions in virtual meetings, she was attending every single one of those just to make sure that they go smoothly. OCOM, I was on call 24/7 for the entire year of to be ready to provide updates for the public and coordinate all of the town hall meetings that we had over COVID in a virtual meeting and to keep our employees informed when things were changing so rapidly. Other unsung heroes are city attorney who had to guide us through how we would comply with all of the governor's executive orders and comply with Freedom of Information Act requirements, even as we did our business so differently. Oh, and in the meantime, she also had to renegotiate our comprehensive agreement with Falls Church Gateway Partners when the city, when they came to the city to request significant changes due to the pandemic. So many unsung heroes. First among them, Joe Carter with our Office of Emergency Management, who is at the center of all of our planning and response so that we could operate safely when we did start to reopen. Our commissioner of revenue and our treasurer, who throughout this whole past year have been the stalwart face of City Hall, who's remained open to serve customers who don't have access to the internet or sometimes just crave some human interaction. They were there throughout, our constitutional officers to serve them. HHS, our human services staff, really were our frontline for working with the most vulnerable in our community, people in extreme distress, losing loved ones, losing jobs, not knowing where their next meal was going to come from. They deployed CARES funds, and I think one of the most aggressive ways that I'm aware of of any place in Virginia to help people with emergency rent assistance, food assistance, utilities assistance. Perhaps most high-profile, our city police department. This has been a year where shift after shift, our police officers had to constantly change because we had officers who would get sick or go on quarantine because of their constant interaction with the public, and we had officers go weeks on end without a day off as they filled in for employees in quarantine. And after the murder of George Floyd and the national protests that ensued, our police and sheriff responded with grace and professionalism to work with community and examining our policies on use of force and also self-initiating dialogue and reforms internally. So much great work. Our planning department, as Andy Rankin just noted, has kept our eyes on the future throughout this whole year. We got the West Falls area plan through the adoption Broad Washington project, an amendment to our SE process, the first time in 20 years that that ordinance has been amended. The West Falls site plan is moving ahead under their watch. These are very transformative projects. And our building permit staff worked with our school administration to make sure the high school was built safely. Founders Row, two of those very complex projects that are building permit staff have administered public works, delivering project after project, keeping the library construction project on budget, working the South Washington intermodal project, Big Chimneys Park. And DPW operations is another group that came to work every day in person. Many of them felt, many of them did contract COVID during that period of time as well. And again, staff had to back each other up to help staff when they were in quarantine. So many other examples, rec and parks, reimagining how to conduct camp, sports, recreation for people who just needed that type of outlet, and boy, did people really need it. And they worked tirelessly to provide those things. They provided the Rec Connect program with a focus on providing support for remote learning for children of households where the parent or both parents are nurses, police, teachers, grocery workers, or other essential personnel and couldn't be home to help their children log on and navigate remote learning. Our library staff, great leaders, and they were the first in the region to go to curbside checkout. But our library staff have also been great leaders in our organization and in the community in working and promoting racial equity in how we deliver our services, and we're taking those lessons and trying to apply them citywide. I'll note just a few more. We're joined on this meeting by our school administration. Our school staff have sought every way possible over the past year to provide a rich learning experience for our students during the fully remote learning period, and I believe are the first in our region to bring student teachers back to in-person learning in a safe manner. It's taken incredible planning and hard work to make that happen. Oh, and at the same time, they managed to the completion of a new high school ahead of schedule and within budget, which is a generational achievement during this most difficult year. Throughout this whole year, city council, you all have led with steady leadership, speaking with one unified voice in favor of public health, workforce safety. Through the mayors and chairs groups and through all of your work with COG, you all have provided crucial feedback to the governor and his staff and to our congressional delegation as every level of government has tried to get through this. You've set kind of a perfect example, I would say, in how elected leadership should conduct itself through an emergency. I'll end with our finance staff. Kieran and Melissa and our entire team have led us through a most tumultuous year. I will say, a global economic shutdown is exactly the worst-case scenario for a locality that has just issued the largest bond in its history for the high school. But Kieran and her team have calmly guided the ship of finance through these dangerous waters, and I think you'll see in this budget that we're able to take the changes that were difficult to make last spring in our COVID emergency budget and now build off of that and get hopefully resources where they're most needed. So that's a long introduction, and I thank you for indulging me on that, but it has been such a momentous year. We're right at the anniversary of it beginning, and I think we do feel that things are changing, and they're changing in a very positive way. They will not change as rapidly as we shut things down, but with vaccinations rolling out, springtime in the air, we need to maintain vigilance, but certainly have optimism for the future, and hopefully this budget reflects that as well. So let me go through a few slides, and I will then turn it over to Dr. Noonan for the school budget presentation, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions. Of course, we'll have a full month with the council on this budget and have lots of opportunities for engagement with the public as well, and I'll talk about that schedule at the end. Next slide, please. So a couple of key things at a glance. We're trying to sustain key investments in public safety and emergency management, flood mitigation, which we really began last year in response to the big rain events we've experienced. We want to sustain investments in walkability and traffic calming. We want to provide a competitive and necessary compensation for our city workforce. Investments in responsive government. We're funding the city's school request, which came in at budget guidance. This budget does provide a reduction in the real estate tax rate by one penny to basically keep our revenues aligned with what the forecasts were in December without a larger increase on our residential real estate taxpayers in particular. And then one last thing I'll note that's a really important part of FY '22 budget planning is that we have major state and federal grants pending. Some of the crucial ones actually are not yet finalized, and so they're not in this budget, but we will be bringing budget amendments forward in the future to carry out their designated mission. And notably, the congressional action, the Senate action this past weekend on the American Recovery Act, that still needs to go to reconciliation, so there's still some more steps in that. But that will be a major budget planning exercise for us as well to allocate that congressional aid, which is really needed and necessary and which we will use very well, particularly for infrastructure and long-term capital needs that we have in the city. Next slide, please. Our operating budget. So this is a busy chart, and I'll hit some of the highlights on it. In this chart, we start at the top with a school transfer. That's an increase of just over $1 million or a 2.5% increase. We also do fund the school CIP request of $125,000. We use capital reserves to do that. The general government will grow for the operating budget at $946,000 or 2.3%. This budget does provide, however, funding for two additional items. One is $100,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund, and this is the first time that the city's actually built into the tax rate a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, and that is following the strategic plan that the council reviewed this past fall, which was developed by HHS with the help of some, a grant-funded consultant. And so we built that into this year's budget. In addition, due to two things. One, again, the rising, we had a little bit of extra money in terms of rising assessment. I put that into a contingency in the amount of $200,000 to address either revenue shortfalls or changing needs from our community as we emerge out of this COVID period. We do fund some additional needs in our building permitting function. We have major projects that are coming online this year, and we dip into our reserves, our permit reserves, to fund those. I'll talk about those in a bit more detail. Our debt service is going down, and that is because of capital that we took out of the CIP last year in the COVID budget and paid for either with cash or just canceled the projects altogether. And we also refunded a 2011 and a 2013 debt issuance, so we have $508,000 in debt service savings in this year's budget. The pension return on investment, this is something that council budget guidance always requests that we highlight, and we're pleased to do so. When the city council invested $9 million of the water sale proceeds, that provides a perpetual dividend for the taxpayers, and that's $640,000 of avoided costs on the pension side that is a benefit to the taxpayers, and that really all goes to help fund our capital program. And then lastly, I'll note that the capital reserves, we are allocating in this budget $6.2, $6,270,000, and that represents the second payment for the ground lease from Falls Church Gateway Partners for the West Falls project, and it also reflects the Founders' Row voluntary concessions that are expected to be paid this summer. So all in, it's an 8.6% increase in the budget, but a big chunk of that is these contributions to capital reserves. Without that last line, the budget is actually growing 2.2%. Next slide. So for those who've been watching the budget for years, this is a very familiar slide. It's a pie chart of where our money comes from. I'll talk about revenues just for a few slides and then shift to major initiatives that are funded in the budget. The majority of our revenues do come from the real estate tax, 58% in total of our budget comes from real estate taxes. That's broken out between the residential component of real estate and the commercial component, just so people are aware of those two differences. Going around the horn, we also have about 25% of our budget comes from other business taxes and then state and federal funds, charges for service, and other revenues. Next slide. So a couple of the trends, and most of these are very much aligned with what we discussed in September, with like, for instance, personal property. I think that forecast is exactly what we thought it would be back in December. And sales tax, that 23% growth, that's a remarkable number, but remember, we cut our sales tax very significantly in '21 in response to COVID. So part of that spring back is simply that making up for those big sharp reductions that we made last spring. But it should be noted that largely with our grocery store sales and with online sales for which we get a portion remitted to us from the State Department of Taxation, those do, in fact, have some year-over-year increases on sales tax. It's been a positive trend, somewhat surprisingly for us, but we did report that back in December. Meals tax and beehole taxes, again, those are largely some spring back from big cuts that we made in our revenue forecast last spring. Other taxes are things like hotel taxes. That's the biggest one where we have a very significant decrease, and we're keeping that decrease on our books, not knowing exactly how the hospitality industry is going to spring back. It also includes things like cigarette taxes and some of our utility taxes, which have been on a downward trajectory for a couple of years now. And then lastly, other local revenue, it's another pretty significant decrease. The big drivers of that negative 8% on other local revenues is decreases in fines. With COVID, our police department did change its operations, and there was a long period of time where it was not best practice to pull people over for traffic violations, not to mention the fact that there were fewer people out there traveling. One other big decrease is return on investments. With interest rates now at near zero, that is a significant decrease in local revenues as well. Next slide. So the story on assessed value, overall, a 2.7% growth in assessed value. A large part of the change since December, when we presented this, is the increase in the residential sector. So we have overall residential AV growth of 4.1% if you take the single-family townhouses and condos together. And that reflects market appreciation of 3.5% and new construction of about 0.6%. That's the tear downs and the major additions out in the neighborhoods. In the commercial sector, market changes alone reflect a, almost a 6% decrease in assessed value, and that's due to, you know, that is due to COVID and difficulties in the commercial real estate market. That's made up for, however, by new construction principally from Founders' Row, which is about $55 million of new value that's come online effective January 1. One other note I'll make, in terms of total AV growth, or our total AV, we're at $4.57 billion, and so at this point, then, one penny on the real estate tax rate reflects $457,000, just as one thing to sort of file away. But the other kind of key point to make about AV is how much of the AV growth is from new construction. That $72.7 million of new construction represents the equivalent of about 3.5 cents on the real estate tax rate. So new construction, Founders' Row in particular being the largest one, is very important in terms of how we're making this budget work this year. Next slide. So as I noted on the first slide, we are proposing in this budget a reduction in the real estate tax rate to $134.5. And while that's a penny reduction in the rate for the average homeowner, there still will experience approximately a 3% on average increase in the tax bill due to market appreciation of their home. Just as a point, a one penny in the reduction in the tax rate would represent about 75 cents for the average homeowner. Next slide. The other direction? Thank you. So this shows a couple of different things. One, the orange bar represents the actual tax rate, and the blue line represents what the median homeowner in the city is actually paying in taxes. And so as I just noted, it's approximately a $291 increase for the average homeowner in the city, and the average home in the city is worth about $752,000. And that's, when I say home, that's inclusive of townhouses, condos, and single-family homes. Next slide. Now we're going to shift to some of the major initiatives in this year's budget. So first, just a quick orientation in terms of how the overall budget fits together. Education is the core part of our operating budget with local dollars to support our public schools. That's 41% of the budget. Debt service is the blue there to the right, and we have shaded it a little bit differently. We've done this for a number of years just to show how much of that debt service goes to support our school facilities, which is the lighter blue, and the darker blue is debt service for all other general government purposes. Together, debt service is 14% of the budget, and the council will probably recall that historically debt service was always around 6% to 8% of our budget, but we've increased it to accomplish our major capital goals, including the high school, and that will be the case for the next several years until some of our other debt comes off the books and we step back down. Other major components of the budget include administration, our judicial services, public safety, which is police and fire, is the second largest part of our budget, and that's 16%. Public works is 5% of our budget. Recreation parks and library is 5% of our budget. HHS is 3%, and CPEDs, our community development, is 5% of our budget. Next slide. So next, we'll just go through some of So next we'll just go through some of the, the major initiatives. So as council member Hardy asked at the outset of this presentation, we are sustaining investments in our sidewalks. In the current fiscal year, it's LED streetlights, but that's now is converting into purely a sidewalk designation, pay as you go capital in the amount of $150,000. So that's sustained. And then the $100,000 is sustained in FY22 for neighborhood traffic calming. We will however be delivering in the coming year, the major Greenway Downs Traffic Calming Project, which is funded with a federal grant. And we've assembled the teams and the neighborhood teams right now and our consultant to work through the, the whole package of neighborhood traffic calming for that neighborhood, that whole side of town actually using that grant. So that's something that's going to take a lot of activity and a lot of public engagement to work those solutions through. And I think it'll be a very visible part of the program in the coming year. One other note, we are increasing our paving budget by $150,000. We're currently underfunding paving and frankly, we have been ever since the recession. And I do think it's important that we restore funding to our paving budget. And every time we repave, we also put in pedestrian facilities, bike facilities and markings for all modes of traffic so that those streets are safe for all modes of traffic. So I want to note that as well. Next slide. In the area of transportation continuing on, this is an area where we're, we're very fortunate to have significant grant dollars. And, and so this will be a big focus of the Department of Public Works and CPEDs over the coming year to administer these projects. Park Avenue Great Streets, that's a, that's a big one that's funded through the NVTA. The West Falls Project also funded through the NVTA at 6.9 million. Cindy has done heroic work getting us funding for the South Oak Street Bridge. That's been on our CIP for a decade now, but that project's going to happen this year with this funding. What's happening, not in the budget, but already underway are, are the South Maple and South Washington Street intersection that we'll see construction on that this year. We're in final engineering and bidding for that project. North Washington and Columbia Street intersection improvements. The Broad Street Hawk Signals, that's a project that people will see roll out this year. That's a grant funded as well. South Washington Street, we'll finish that project this year. That's a project that is a decade plus in the making and we'll be very pleased to get that wrapped up this year with the pedestrian improvements and the cultural markings there at the Intermodal Transit Station. And then lastly, I'll just note that in addition to the dual trails, we also have the WNOD Crossings Project, which the city is administering. We'll do that in very close coordination with the Park Authority, but that also is grant funded. So that's a major area of investment and activity using grant funds. So we'll talk now about public health and safety. And this is, as I noted at the beginning, this has been a really big year and a very difficult and dramatic year for, for police and sheriff. But one of the things we do fund in, in this year's budget is something that our police officers want us to have and those are body worn cameras. Of that $145,000 that's in the budget, 45, 45,000 of that is local tax dollars and 100,000 of that is grant funding to support both the purchase of the cameras and also to work through the data storage. We also are funding in this budget some additional civilian positions that will support the department and support a uniform patrol. That is one of the things that came out of, of our discussions with the Use of Force Committee. So some examples of that is adding a part-time police officer, ideally a retired police officer who will take the load off of our command staff for reviewing all of our photo read violations, school bus camera violations and the new school zone speed controls, which has not yet been implemented. The City of Fairfax is the first in the region to implement those. I will be looking to do that, but a key piece of that is having the staff to review those violations and you need to have uniformed staff do that. We'll add a public safety aide for animal control. And when we bring on a public safety aide, one of the great benefits of doing that is that they can be trained in multiple disciplines for school crossings, as well as helping us for special events and a host of, of functions. So that's funded in the budget. We are, we used CARES money to fortify our Office of Emergency Management this past year with additional staff support for Joe Carter. And we'll sustain that in this year's budget by making that a permanent position in the Office of Emergency Management and backfill that with another public safety aide. One other thing I'll note, we are working with Arlington County right now on 911 dispatch and we're exploring the option of moving our dispatch function to Arlington. That's a major change to our operations. It's a major impact on our city staff. But what's driving it is the move to NextGen 911, which will be very demanding. And I think if you sort of look at how that's going to go over the next 10 years, it really has prompted us to look very hard at joining it with a more regional approach on 911 dispatch. That has not yet been finalized with Arlington County. So when you read the budget book, it will present dispatch as it always has been. But we are working through that option and we're also working through what the contract costs for having that function with Arlington County, what, what the budget impact will be. So more to come on that. Next slide. Our, our last point on public health and safety is, is discussing our building permit function. And again, we're dipping into our building permit reserves, just under a half a million dollars. We're adding one new FTE in this function for permit intake functions. It's something that we currently, I think is probably our top need to provide that support for people who walk in. But we'll also sustain the contracted building plan review and inspections and the two FTEs that we built into the budget last year to keep that function going at the high level that it needs to be with all the construction activity in the city. Next slide. In the area of equity and inclusiveness, a couple of initiatives that I want to bring to the council's attention and wrecking parks, just as an example, we have always provided financial assistance for people who can't, who need it for our camps and for our athletic or rec programs. But with this budget, we actually have dedicated funds to actually promote that as an option to, to really try to increase the accessibility for the entire community to participate in these programs. We also, in terms of tax relief, we don't have program changes to our tax relief programs proposed in this budget, but our actual usage of existing policy that the council worked through over the past two years has come in higher than was initially forecast. So we put 42,000 extra dollars to support that program. As I noted earlier, we have $100,000 built into the tax rate for affordable housing. That will be complemented in a big way by the Amazon Reach Grant, which has been approved for the city, but has not yet gone through the formal process. So that is, that 3.75 million is not yet in the budget. And if it's finalized during budget review, we can add it in, but most likely that will be a budget amendment later in the fiscal year. Very exciting to have all of these moving forward. Next slide. In terms of small town character, just a couple of things to note, we are continuing with the downtown improvements. However, it uses 1% of the hotel tax. And as I noted earlier, our hotel tax revenue forecast is down significantly and accordingly, that 1% generates less than the 90,000 that it has been in years past. We'll keep an eye on that. Park master planning, we're continuing on with those investments in our parks. Those are debt financed with $150,000. Next slide. A couple of key investments in this budget. For employee compensation, we're proposing a merit increase of 3% for city employees. For our uniform patrol officers, we would fund the STEP program of 3.5% and that would be for all of our police uniform staff. Health insurance has been very, growth has been very modest this year. That's very helpful to our employees that pay a share of those premiums and it's also helpful to the city budget. In addition, in this budget, we have the three FTS which I've, I've described earlier in this presentation, which are the public safety aides and the police department, as well as the positions, the, the counter position for our building permits and CPEDs. We also have a, an HR position and library custodial support in, in the budget as well. With the brand new library, we need to increase our custodial support to make sure we keep that new building clean. Next, next slide. The HR position that was just listed on the prior slide, we're upgrading a part-time position in our human resources department to a full-time position and that position would be dedicated principally towards recruitment and talent acquisition. We, we have been struggling over the past, once we released some of the vacancies to fill vacancies and it's actually been something we've struggled with for years. But with this position, we'll also be able to put increased intention into recruiting in an inclusive way to make sure that we're drawing the talent from the entire region and from, well, from well-qualified people of all racial, ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds. It will benefit the diversity, inclusivity of our staff and our workforce. We do have investments in our fleet and equipment. We're doing that with our five-year debt financed fleet replacement fund. And so $50,000 actually in the budget through, through that debt process will generate approximately $250,000 of fleet renewal. We also have pay as you go facilities reinvestment of $200,000 for the general government and we have $125,000 from, coming from capital reserves for the school CIP and the area of facilities reinvestment. And lastly on this slide, we have investments that are not funded in the budget for IT core infrastructure, but I think they are listed in the CIP as a need. And I think that that is one of the examples of using some of the American Recovery Act funds to help shore up our IT core infrastructure would be a good use of those funds. Next slide. So in the budget, just in terms of context, my budget guidance to department directors for over six years in a row now has been to keep non-personnel expenses flat. And so I, it is really important to emphasize that after six years in a row of doing that and then in addition, the cuts that were made last year for the COVID budget, our budgets are extremely lean. I did ask department directors to list out what are the, some of the things that need to be funded, which aren't, and tallying all those up through our budget process that comes to just under $4 million of unfunded needs that our department directors have identified. It's a long list and it will provide in the budget document, but some examples include additional uniform police officer positions, additional IT staff, programs and equipment, economic development staff, and wrecking investments in our recreation, recreation and parks, facilities, maintenance, for instance, for our basketball and tennis courts and field maintenance, just as some examples of some of the unmet needs that are not funded in this budget. Next slide. I've got just two more slides just to talk about our utility funds and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan for a presentation and to Chair Litten for a discussion of the school budget. On the stormwater fund side, we have $8.5 million in the CIP for flood mitigation. That's funding for the six priority projects from the Stormwater Task Force of last year. I am proposing in this year's budget, a 2% rate increase to the stormwater fee for FY22. And currently for the median homeowner, the, the stormwater fees is $230. So this 2% rate increase would be a $5 increase for the median homeowner. And what that would be used for is to essentially pay the fund back for the investments in some of the smaller projects that we did over the past year to address some of the smaller nuisance flooding issues that we've been having. It does not go, that 2% is really not geared towards the major projects. That will be part of a plan of finance and as the council is well aware, will be expensive over the next five years with most likely 10%, 10 to 15% year over year increases as those projects, as the debt service for those projects comes online. And then lastly, for stormwater, the Stormwater Task Force is putting forward its recommendations in March about investments in green infrastructure to help with stormwater quality as well as flood mitigation. Those are likely going to be very well-suited for grant funding. And so we'll also have some ideas on how to fund those when those recommendations come forward. Next slide. On the sanitary sewer side, there are no rate increases planned for next year and that's been the case now for five years in a row. We do have a rate study underway, however, just to, and, and one of the main reasons is to make sure our connection fees that developers pay are adequate for system expansion to accommodate growth. So more to come on that. Next slide. So we have our budget town hall that's scheduled for this Thursday, March 11th at 12 noon. That's an opportunity where we'll present information to the public on this budget and answer questions. We'll do that jointly with the school administration. Next, the week after on March 22nd, we'll have first reading on the budget, tax rate ordinance and the stormwater rate ordinance. On April 12th, we'll have a public hearing. On April 5th, we'll have our second, April 15th, we'll have our second town hall meeting on the budget. That will be at night as opposed to at noon. That'll be at 7:30 and then we're all working towards April 26th for when council gives final consideration to the budget. This calendar is kept online where people can keep track of, of what's happening on the budget at, on the city's webpage. Last slide. We do want people's comments and input on this budget and they can send comments to budget@fallschurchva.gov. You can also find this presentation and all the budget documents on the city's webpage at these links that are listed here. Our next work session next week will be focused on the CIP, which is where a lot of the action is in the budget every year. Cindy Mester will lead that presentation and all that information's on the city webpage as well. So I look forward to engaging with the council on this budget, but more immediately, I look forward to now turning over the reins to Dr. Noonan and his team to present to the council the school budget and then I think we'll then take questions from the council on, on both together.
All right. Welcome to Dr. Noonan and Chair Litten and the rest of the folks on the board. By the way, if you're not speaking, please mute your, mute your computer. But anyway, just wanted to welcome you all to, to our meeting this evening. We look forward to what you have to say as far as your budget goes. Congratulate you as well as getting on that beautiful new high school for our kids. So a lot of good things happening this year. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Noonan and Chair Litten.
Thank you Mayor Tarter and the council and thank you very much to City Manager Shields for, for his presentation and his comments leading up to it. This evening Chair Litten is going to do our presentation for us, but before she starts, I, I just wanted to say a couple of things. And first and foremost, just thank you again for your continued partnership. You know, there obviously is, a year ago about this time, as, as the city manager indicated, we were in a far different place. In fact, I was going around and talking with people about how excited I was about the school budget because I really felt like we were able to get a leg up and do some things that we weren't able to do. And then of course, we moved into COVID and everything changed. But this year's budget and that Chair Litten is going to present is equally, I think, important to us as a school division. And I wanted to make sure that everybody in the community that might be watching at home understands the process on the, on the school side is slightly different than perhaps on the, on the general government side insofar as I, I started my budget work with the staff in November, December timeframe, getting input around priorities. I worked with the board around priorities and the like. And then the superintendent does what's And then the superintendent does what's called a proposed budget. And I proposed a budget in the January timeframe and then there were multiple opportunities for the community to come and do a budget hearing and provide feedback. And then last month, the budget was adopted by the school board, which then creates, essentially it moves out of the superintendent's hands and then becomes the school board's advertised budget. So this evening, it's my pleasure and an honor to turn it over to our new chair of the school board, Ms. Shannon Litten, to present the school board's FY22 advertised budget reflecting the school board's priorities. Ms. Litten.
Great, thank you, Dr. Noonan and thank you, Mr. Shields, Mayor Tarter and City Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you the school board's 2022 advertised budget. You can flip the slide. So first, I just want to comment, and I know Dr. Noonan also just said this, but how much we really on the school side appreciate our partnership with the city. You know, I think we all know that being a strong city requires a lot of different things and while we do the school piece, I think there's so much that you guys have done on the city side. I'd really like to point out, the city council, I know you guys have done a lot of work over the past few years in building our commercial tax base, which I think is really important as we go forward to ensure we have the money we need. So thank you for your work on that, for your efforts on affordable housing and ongoing efforts for infrastructure on things like parks, recreation, traffic calming, all those things that you guys do to really make the city a great place. So I think on behalf of the school board, we just want to say thank you guys for all of that work. So as we begin to look at our budget, we do want to note that this is for the third consecutive year, we're bringing forward a budget that falls within budget guidance following our revenue sharing agreement that utilizes organic growth. And this was really important, I think, to the school board this year especially. We know it's been a difficult year for everybody and there's still a lot of work going forward. So we really felt that it was important that we have a smooth budget process this year. So we're happy to bring this forward. One of the reasons I think we really feel it's important to have a smooth process is we're still in the middle of the high school project and we do want to say a huge thank you to the city for your efforts on that. We're really thrilled with the high school as it currently stands. I know there's still some work to do outside, but we're so excited to have students in the building to soon be really opening it up to the whole community. So we just want to say thank you on that and I know we all want the entire project to be done well. So I think as you guys really start your part of the project, we just want to be here to support you in any way we can. So all that to say, the school board appreciates the support of the city council and more broadly, our community's investment in our schools. You can go ahead and flip the slide. So I know you guys have all probably seen this before, but for us on the school side, this is sort of our mission and our core of who we are. So in all we do, we like to refer back to this as Dr. Noonan calls it, the placemat. But it gives our mission and then sort of our three pillars of IB for all, caring, community and culture and closing gaps. So in all we do, including this budget, we really like it to come back to this sort of mission and vision. You can flip. So to dig into the budget for our FY2022 revenue, you can go ahead and flip. So for projected revenue, as you guys all know, we basically have three main areas where we get our revenue. Our local funding, the state funding and the federal funding. Given, as you know, given the relative affluence of our community, we do rely very heavily on our local funds. So the budget we're bringing forward will be relying on city funding to provide 81.5% of our operating revenue. So that revenue combined with state funding should account for 96.2% of the budget this year. On the federal revenue side, as you may know, most of the funds we do get are for special education through IDEA and that's projected this year to be a total of 605,000 or 1.1% of all of our revenue. This is a slight increase over last year with, it's a 5.6% increase. You can go ahead and flip. So on our guidance and revenue sharing, as you guys know, we were given our budget guidance in December of this year, which called for a 2.5% increase over our FY2021 budget. So for the schools, this 2.5% increase would be, this would be an increase of $1,68,894 and this is kind of our starting point. So if you take what we had last year and add this amount to it, the amount we're expecting to get from the general government this year would be $43,824,671. And as I mentioned before, that would be 81.5% of our budget. You can flip. All right, so for our state revenue this year, I think the news has actually been better than maybe we would have expected given COVID. But based on the governor's proposed budget that he released in December, state revenue should account for 14.5% of the school district's revenue this year. So for state aid, we're expecting $4,883,000 and this is a projected increase of about $20,000. For sales tax, we're expecting $2,884,000 and this is an expected, a projected increase of $307,000 or about 11.9%. You can flip. So the state budget, as you guys may know, the General Assembly has passed the state budget and it's now gone to the governor for his signature. So this slide just highlights a few things of note in that budget. And one thing we want to point out is there is a 5% pay increase effective July 1st, 2020 in that budget. It has funding for school systems required to be at least 2% with then funding prorated 2% to 5%. So I want to note on this, on this piece, you'll see later in our budget, we have managed to come up with a 4% increase in funding for our staff. Given the prorated piece of this, we will be able to take advantage of quite a bit of that, but not all the way, since we don't have all the way up to a 5% increase, we're essentially leaving a little bit of that money on the table. There will be no loss of funding to protect for reductions in daily, in the average daily membership. Our counselor ratio, sorry, ratio reduced to one student per 325 is required in this budget and there will be some money provided for learning loss recovery. You can go ahead and flip. So now we'll look at our FY2022 expenditures. You can go ahead and flip. So as we look at our new expenditures this year, we are putting a priority on compensation. And I think just sort of big picture from the school board and the way we view this is that this is really just something we have to continually do. I know you guys know, a few years back, when we didn't continue to increase this, unfortunately, we fell behind some of our neighboring districts and then we had to have a few years where we really had to put a significant amount of money into raising our compensation to be competitive with neighboring districts. So this really remains a priority for us and we just feel like it's something we have to continually work on. As you know, last year, we had proposed an increase in compensation for our employees with, when COVID hit and we had to make some cuts to our budget. That is part of what was cut out. So we decided to make this one of our priorities for this year. So you can see here on the compensation, we're proposing a step, which will cost about $951,000 and this provides an average increase of 2.5% for employees. And a step, you guys may know, but it's kind of the ongoing commitment to progress our employees through our salary scale. And then the other piece we're proposing is a cost of living adjustment. And with this, for each 0.5%, we raise the cost of living, it will cost the district $210,000. So you may know, when Dr. Noonan first brought forward his budget, there was only a 0.5% proposed in that. Since then, we've been able to find some additional savings. So we've now been able to raise that from 0.5 to 1.5. So overall, what we are hoping to do in compensation is to give a 4% increase in compensation. You can switch the slide. So on employees, this also touches on our benefit rate increases. So overall, we have some increased expenses. Luckily with the retirement, there's been no rate of increase in the Virginia retirement system this year. So we're actually getting a small amount of savings there. As you see, it's relatively small, but better than nothing. On health insurance rates, we're expecting a $51,000 increase that we'll need to come up with. And I believe Mr. Wyatt also mentioned this in his presentation, but there is a 2.4% increase for Blue Cross and 0% for Kaiser. Then finally, there's some other post-employment benefits that will cost $60,000. You can flip the slide. So as we look at the year ahead, we do need to look at enrollment and kind of big picture, I would say, on how we're approaching this is we're assuming that school is going to go back, at least relatively, to be relatively normal next year. I think between seeing our numbers of COVID cases decreasing and a greater proportion of the population being vaccinated, with hopes that by midsummer, we will have reached a pretty significant portion of our adult population being vaccinated, we're really planning on the assumption that school will be relatively normal next year. So we're predicting enrollment for FY2022 to be 2,605. So this is an increase of 101 students as compared to September 30th of this year. So as many of you know, we did see a decrease of students this year. From what we know, most of those students, the greatest percent left to do homeschooling. Also, some left to go to private schools and this was primarily due to COVID and online learning. But we're, now that we are back in a hybrid form, we're already seeing some of those students return to our system. So we are moving ahead with the assumption that most of our students are going to return as normal next year. You can forward the slide. So in addition to compensation, here are our proposed 2022 investments for the year ahead and these are primarily to address COVID impacts and build for the future. So the first one you'll see here is an English Language Arts pre-K through 12 coordinator. And some of them you may know at, we currently have a math coordinator who plays this role. And that person has really been a great help to our teachers, students, folks who need additional help and really just improving our entire progression in the curriculum of math. So what we'd really like to do is bring on a person who could play a similar role in English Language Arts. So that's what that position is. We're also proposing to bring on another social worker. Given all the challenges of the past year, both to students and families, we feel like this would be a good investment for our district. And a social worker works really beyond just the student to try and help the family to ensure students have all the supports they need in place. And finally, we bring on another school counselor and that will help us to meet the new ratios proposed by the governor. Finally, we will need to put some funding into new student devices. Those are on an every-four-year cycle and we do need to renew that. So that helps us to maintain our one-to-one student device ratio that we currently have in the district. Finally, we will need some new custodial support at the high school level given we're adding a significant amount of square footage. So the final one is additional custodial support. You can flip the slide. So as you may have noticed, between the compensation and the other expenditures we'd like to do, it's actually above the 2.5% being provided by the city. So we have found some areas to do some reductions and realignments. So most of these are just some things we'll be doing, kind of tweaks within the budget. The one thing I would point out is that we will be eliminating a paraprofessional for the first grade and this is really just based on some enrollment changes we think we will have with a, the size of the first grade class moving up to second grade. We're going to need one less first grade teacher and an additional second grade teacher. And as you guys know, we have paras in every first grade class, but not second. So we don't believe that para will lose their job. They will just likely be moved into another paraprofessional opening that will likely have somewhere in the district. You can forward the slide. So finally, this is kind of the big picture snapshot of what we're proposing for our budget. And as you can see, our FY2022 advertised budget is a 3% increase over our 2021 approved budget. So if you look down at the small box, those are all the increases in funding we're expecting to get. As you can see, there's the federal, state and the general government transfer. And then in the bigger box to the right is our expenditure adjustments. So those are all the proposals for additional money we plan to spend and then you'll see near the bottom are our reductions and realignments in the areas we plan to save money. So between the two boxes, you can see we plan to, the numbers match, so it should be a balanced amount. All right, you can go to the next slide. I'm sure you guys have seen these pie charts before, but they're just tweaked for our 2022 amounts. So the first chart is our revenue and the second one is our expenditures. You can go to the next slide. Oh, I think the other direction maybe. All right, here are all the budget dates and a lot of those are now handed over to you guys, so the city council budget dates. And the next slide. And this is included really for the link on the bottom. As you guys know, on the school board side, all of the school board questions that are asked, we put into written format and we post those on our website. So if folks have more in-depth questions, usually you can go on there and probably find the answers to those at that website. Go ahead and flip. So just a final thank you. And I personally just want to say a quick thank you to Dr. Noonan, Kristin Michael and Michelle Kopic for their work on our side. And then again, just to thank Mayor Tarter, Wyatt Shields and the city council for your ongoing support for all of our work in the schools. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very, thank you very much. That's a very com-
All right, thank you very, thank you very much. It's a very comprehensive um, slideshow. We really appreciate it, and we, more importantly, appreciate our collaboration. And I think the great things we've done, um, working together, that new high school especially, is just so exciting for our community. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up to questions, both from folks on city council or any school board members that are on the call about either budget, the school board or city budget. So let's go ahead and see if people have questions. I know this is the first time we've seen this, and our community's seen it as well. So I just want to assure particularly our community that the ample opportunity um, to ask questions and participate and um, seek additional guidance about these budgets, and we plan on having town halls and the like um, in the coming weeks. So you will have a time, will you have a chance to ask questions directly? Um, Ms. Hardy?
Other people want to go first. I'm happy to pass it on. Am I the only one so far?
Well, just go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Shields, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough, and I'm glad to see investments in lots of areas, especially coming off of a really tough year. Uh, I guess the biggest question for me is, um, with, I guess, the likelihood of federal aid coming um, very soon, um, and a pretty sizable relief act, I think, on top of that, um, what sort of order of magnitude are we thinking that might come locally to us? And how do we plan for that effectively in this budget?
I think a way to think about the federal money is, are there things that we could, that we're currently planning to fund with, um, you know, through the CIP that we could either accelerate or relieve? Uh, you know, anything that's funded in the CIP with debt is structured that way in order to make it easier for taxpayers to to fund it. If we could pay for it uh, more quickly, then we would do so. Um, and so the federal funding will help us with that. I think some of our earlier priorities, though, I think we will still need to sustain some of our our COVID support programs uh, for our most vulnerable populations. And um, and, you know, so those are some of the things that we'll want to do. And when we talk about, um, uh, you know, anything that impacts the operating budget, we need to be very careful about that. This is one-time money, and it really should not be used uh, for ongoing type of expenditures. Like, I think that's one of the key things for it. I will say that we are working internally to try to think through some of the most effective ways that we could use those dollars for the benefit of our taxpayers, and we also want to engage that discussion with the, with the school administration as well.
And I guess what might be helpful is, given that the federal money is going to be limited to capital, is to identify that pay-go-capital items we have, in case those can be funded with one-time money instead of out of the operating budget. Um, and then stormwater in particular. I'm sure nobody likes the idea of a ten to fifteen percent increase year over year for the next five years, and so some of that can be held over for stormwater. Um, if that's allowed in the rules, that might be helpful, too.
I believe it will be, yes.
Great. Um, so that was one of my first questions. Second is, um, I think going to the local revenue projection slide, I forget what slide number that was. I think you mentioned that obviously there's some pretty impressive growth numbers there, and I think the majority of those, based on the fact that FY twenty-one was such a down year for us. But even taking that into account, um, is the recovery from FY twenty-two essentially bringing us back to pre-COVID numbers? Are we seeing growth beyond pre-COVID?
Can I ask Ms. Bawa to answer that question?
Um, good evening. Uh, so yes, overall, we are seeing a recovery. However, there are some um, local tax categories like hotel taxes that have still not come uh, over the COVID level, of pre-COVID levels. But overall, sales taxes have uh, made up for a loss on other side, on some of the other categories. Um, the commute, um, the cigarette tax, the communication tax, the utility tax, they have seen a slowdown in the last uh, more than a year. So they're not COVID-related decline, but it has been a decline that we have seen in the last year and a half or so, so, um, which we uh, continue to monitor. So just to sum up the answer, we are seeing a recovery back to pre-COVID level on an overall level.
Pre-COVID and then some? Is it kind of pre-COVID levels and then some beyond kind of where we were?
Uh, except for some, just like hotel tax and others that are not quite there yet.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I'm gonna have a request for two um, areas for benchmarking. So it's always good news to hear a budget presented to us that has a real estate tax rate decrease. I hear that our neighbors in, I think Alexandria and Fairfax County are thinking of the same. Mr. Shields, if you could provide us kind of the latest benchmarking on what the region is doing on the tax rate, that would be helpful. Um, as well as benchmarking kind of salary increases. I know everyone had a paid freeze last year, but it'd be helpful to know kind of where the region is.
Yes, we can provide that um, as soon as we gather it, yeah.
Great. Um, and then maintenance for new stuff. So with the library opening, city hall hopefully opening again, um, in this operating budget, do we have dollars set aside for maintenance of the new things we built?
We have uh, two hundred thousand dollars of pay-as-you-go for facilities maintenance, and that is something that we cut during COVID, so that is one of the things we've restored. I think we, we put seventy-five thousand dollars back into that, uh, taking it from other areas of the budget so that we do sustain that. And just as an idea, you know, or a way to thinking about it, we do have new facilities, and we need to not let them depreciate like we did in years past. When things need to be painted or when things need to be fixed, we want to fix them on the spot before sort of everything sort of gets degraded again, and then we have to spend millions of dollars to bring it back up.
So besides capital, do we think we need extra people to maintain those things as well, or do we think existing staff can handle it?
Um, that's one of our unmet needs uh, in public works. We have, we have uh, two people that work on facilities. Uh, both of them part-time, and, and, you know, they do a whole bunch of other things in addition to facilities. So one of Mr. Bradley's real requests in this budget was to have additional support for facilities tech. Um, and it's not in the budget. However, he is trying to work through some options, possibly with some internal reassignments uh, to provide more support, more staff support for that maintenance activity.
Okay. Um, my last question's for general government. Um, on police, I think I counted it was three, um, increase in FTE between a public safety aide, um, part-time for kind of photo read and speeding enforcement, um, and then emergency management. I think based on uh, the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, where we talked about how a large part of police's job these days is around mental health, um, is there thinking around actually taking one of those positions and turning it into like a social worker or mental health professional who can be ready to be responsive to those types of calls for service instead of essentially aides, I think, as proposed?
That's a, that's a very good point and a very good question, and unfortunately, we do not have um, that resource built into the budget. I think that is an unmet need. Where I think we will actually find those services, however, would be through partnership with Fairfax County. We contract with Fairfax County for our human services. And I think that's where we would get that kind of level of frontline expertise, more so than our, um, you know, the staff uh, you know, in, in HHS. So I think that's the direction where we would want to go with that type of a program. The problem with that, though, is it will be dependent upon Fairfax County moving that forward at a pace that, that we think is necessary here, here as well. So I think that's a good question, and when we get uh, more detailed discussion of the public safety budget, uh, we'll reserve that question so that the chief is prepared to respond to it.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, as much as I want to support animal control, because I know we've had our share of rabid raccoons and whatnot, uh, I do feel like the mental health professional would be uh, more valuable and certainly something that would respond to the community's desires around police. So I think that's it for now for general government. Uh, moving on to the schools. Dr. Noonan and Ms. Litten, thank you for presenting the budget. Uh, clearly, it's been a really tough year for schools and parents and everyone alike in the community. Uh, I guess one of the first big questions is, um, beyond money, which I know that to date, I think we've allocated about a million in CARES money and additional two hundred fifty, I think, is being discussed. How can we support you all with school uh, full-time reopening?
Uh, I'll take that one. Um, thank you uh, for the question, Ms. Hardy. At, at this point, um, it, it really is um, at a place where we, we just need some time and some opportunity to see what works and what doesn't, to be able to load test particularly our pre-K through five students through this quarter. Um, we think that uh, at this point, we have the appropriate amount of resources uh, through our, what's remaining in our CARES II Act, um, to be able to um, get the personnel onboard that we need to carry out the, the goal of reopening uh, by the end of spring break for K five. Um, we are gonna be looking at doing some summer programming for our students. Um, then some of that will be paid for out of CARES II Act. But there may be a need um, for us when we get into sort of learning recovery. Uh, we may need some additional funding. Um, but that, that, that's about it. So in terms of support beyond funding, um, you know, thank you for asking. Um, we've, we've sort of cobbled together the best we can do up to this point. Um, and are, are positioned well to, to at least reopen our, our pre-K five. I think secondary is going to be more complicated um, because of the nature and needs of how students travel through buildings and the age and stage of students, um, with respect to the science around the age of students. Um, so we're, we're continuing to, like I say, load test, but um, right now, I think we're in a pretty good position.
Thank you. And so if we can be partners in helping think creatively, I know space has always been one of the concerns just to maintain distancing. So if it's finding space around the city, um, or creative programs like the Community Center Rec Connect program, I think we're willing to do our part, too, to make it possible for you guys.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for now.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, and thanks for the, the budget presentations. I think um, our citizens realize that certainly in case of the general government and the final school budget, that this is the beginning of the, 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 the process uh, to some extent. And so, um, it's gonna be incumbent upon us to do a couple of things. First of all, come through the budget to see if additional savings are possible uh, consistent with um, core services, what additional savings are possible, and possibility of reducing the tax rate even more than has been proposed, um, I'm sure will be uh, top of mind. Um, secondly, though, there are some good elements to this budget. I'm very pleased that we're um, going to be uh, taking advantage of some state legislation that require, that allows for electronic enforcement of the speed limits um, around schools and the other initiatives relating to the use of force. Work. Um, stormwater continues to be a real challenge. I understand that there may be some grant programs, and I'm sure we'll be going after those with regard to um, financing stormwater uh, in the future, and hopefully there'll, there'll be um, some possibility of using um, additional grant monies for that. We've been pretty good, as the budget says, at getting transportation funding. Um, more than forty million dollars over the last five or six years and a number of projects um, in the works. So that continues to be an area of focus, whether it's sidewalks or streets or bridges or whatever, continues to be a um, major um, focus. Um, with regard to the schools, um, and this is really a question for the superintendent and the school board chair. Um, it's not hard to see that there's a significant um, number of parents who want full reopening um, of K through twelve. And um, they're concerned that there isn't a plan to do that. And while I and others have offered the resources necessary, that offer continues to be on the table as, as Councilmember Hardy said, and as I've mentioned several meetings ago. I, I don't know whether um, you're prepared to discuss that tonight, or it's a follow-up question. But what is the plan for full reopening of the schools K through twelve? It's evident, and I know nobody knows this better than the school personnel do, the cost um, to the students and the parents for the closures that we've had to live through and how fast and safely we can um, return for K through twelve uh, every day. So, um, does the superintendent or the school board chair wish to make a comment on that tonight? Or will you follow up in writing uh, with me? And when we have our work session, I'm sure there'll be a lot of other questions. So let me ask the schools what, uh, what you're prepared to say on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer uh, Councilmember Snyder, and, and I, I'm happy also to forward to you our message that we sent to the school community last Friday that outlined what our plan was. Um, with respect to reopening pre-K through five uh, by the end of, by the, by the start of the fourth quarter. Um, I, I want to be really clear with the council and with the community that may be watching um, that it's not as easy as flipping a switch to try to get twenty-six or twenty-seven hundred students back into a school system. Um, when we're, and I, and I'll use the term mandated again, and I, I'll continue to use it, uh, mandated to maintain the six feet of social distancing by our local health department. Because in a contact tracing event, if someone were to become infected with COVID, anyone with inside, inside that six feet would be considered a close contact. So trying to, um, and, and then that would precipitate, just by the way, a quarantine event for everyone who is considered a close contact. But if we maintain the six feet, we would be able to continue. It, it indicates to us that we need to leverage all of the space that we have available to us. Uh, that not as, that's not just in school buildings, that's on school buses, that's in uh, out on the playground. It's um, it's everywhere across the building. Um, and, and trying to get twenty-six or twenty-seven hundred students into buildings that were built for that, that many students, particularly at pre-K through uh, five, is, is a complicated task. It's an adaptive challenge, not a technical challenge, which means that everyone needs to think a little bit differently about how we provide services to students. Um, and, and then trying to, on top of it all, take a staff and faculty of five hundred people and ask them to think differently. So, um, so I want to make sure that everybody sort of, from a context perspective, understands that, one, nobody, nobody wants to be back more than I do. Um, I want us to be back full-time every single day. But the reality dictates a different um, experience. So in terms of a plan, the plan right now is to have our pre-K students back, uh, pre-K five students back by the end of spring, or start of spring, sorry, end of spring break. And then over the course of the last nine weeks of school, we will continue to increase uh, at the secondary level, student population in the building by utilizing all the space that we have available to us. Right now at the high school, um, our seniors and our juniors can access the building four days a week, two days for direct instruction, and they could do their two days of online instruction from inside the building. At the middle school level, uh, middle school is podding students, and they're bringing in smaller groups of students where we have more than fifty percent of our kids back for uh, four days a week. So we are, we are making good progress. Um, but our full expectation is that by the start of next year, we'll be back five days a week and full-time with our kids for anyone who wants it. And that's another sort of nuance here that comes from COVID. Right now, we have about twenty percent at the elementary school level and about fifteen percent at the high school and, and middle school level that do not want to return to school and want to maintain in the online instructional program, which means that we have to offer two different types of program to our students. Our teachers are not trained for this. They have never experienced anything like this, and to be that adaptive for that many kids has been a challenge for us, and there's no doubt. So I, I want to, I also want to make that really clear um, also. So next year, when we do open, uh, I would fully anticipate that we will be back five days a week, but we'll also continue to likely offer an online opportunity, because we do have a lot of kids that have done very, very well in the online, um, online school. And we have a number of kids that haven't done very, very well in online school. Um, but I also would say, um, listen to the silent, listen to the silence as well as to the loud, because there are a lot of people who are very pleased with what we're doing and the approach that we're taking.
All right, is that it with your questions, Mr. Snyder?
That's all for right now, thank you.
Uh-huh. Vice Mayor Connolly, followed by Mr. Duncan.
Thanks, Mayor Tarter. I have uh, three questions. And one goes to the six hundred and forty thousand dollar savings from the pension investment. I just want to call that out, as I do every year for those who are new to this process. Uh, that six hundred and forty thousand dollars Mr. Shields alluded to is the result of the water sale that was a citizen referendum in two thousand thirteen. And in two thousand fourteen, the city council made a decision to invest the money related to the sale of the water system and the acquisition of the land that where our secondary campus is now. And we put some of that money into the pension plan. And that was a really controversial decision. And one of the fears that I had as a new council member at the time was that that pension ROI would disappear. And it would just become another thing that we weren't paying rather than calling it out and noting that over time we are going to recover that, I think it was eleven thousand, eleven million dollars that went in there, recover that and more. So I just want to call that out. Thank you for including that in there. And at some point, maybe you could, how many years has it been now, seven? This will be the seventh or eighth year?
I think it was twenty fifteen when that decision was made.
We decided it took a long time to figure it out because it was a a novel and interesting way to invest and save money. So it it's adding up to be a significant amount already. And the graphs that we worked that the CFO at the time shared with us showed that in the long run, it will be a wonderful investment for the city. So thank you for including that in there every year. The second question is, or it's more of a compliment, thanking you for including funding in recreation and parks to ensure that all individuals who want to participate are able to regardless of their ability to pay. And I know that the school social workers and the staff of the Recreation and Parks Department have worked really closely over the years to ensure that students that are identified in the schools as being interested in recreation and park programs but can't afford them are able to do that. So making this part of an official program is a very good thing. And my last question now escapes me. So thank you for that, and I look forward to learning more about the budget as we go forward.
All right, Mr. Duncan, followed by Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thanks to our friends with the school system for bringing us a budget that meets the target that we set back in latter part of last year. It's always a good way to start the discussion. If it were a normal year. We would take that and you wouldn't have to work with as much as we look at the rest of the budget. This year is not a normal year, so I guess we'll be having continuing conversations, which leads to my question for both Dr. Noonan and Wyatt, really. So the Legislative Committee under Counselor Snyder's leadership has kept a close eye on what's happening in Richmond and NDRC under our mayor's directorship has, you know, tried to keep us plugged into regional news about funding that comes not only from Richmond but from the feds. As we develop this budget between now and the end of April. Do either of you, Dr. Noonan or Wyatt, have anything in your crystal ball that tells us at least when we might know, what we might know about additional revenues that would be coming to us? Or is that information really not going to land until, you know, June or July sometime after we have set the budget at the end of April? Dr. Noonan, maybe you could go first.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Duncan. At this point, we don't anticipate any additional funding other than federal funding, which would be one time dollars. So there isn't a whole lot because all of our budget, for the most part, is operating. So any additional funding that we do get would be one time money, whether it's from the federal government or the state government, and would be problematic for us to be able to use in the in the operating budget. But we'd be able to put it to use, just not in a way that would help offset the transfer.
Okay, and Wyatt, your thoughts on this?
I think we will know before April twenty sixth. I think so for the federal legislation, we just have to go through the reconciliation process. I have a feeling that Congress is going to want to do that pretty quickly. And and so I have not seen an actual schedule for that. Cindy may have it at the tip of her hand, but I don't. But I would anticipate we will know before budget adoption. Cindy, do you agree?
Yes, at the federal level, they're anticipating having it signed by the president by March fourteenth before the current unemployment supplement ends. It does have a sixty day execution clause, so we wouldn't see the money until FY twenty two. But we should know the amount prior to the adoption of the budget. But as you noted earlier, it needs to be predominantly one time funding. The state budget is anticipated to be approved by the end of April, early May, depending on the amount of governor amendments. So that one will tie in at the tail end of the local budget adoption process.
Okay, good. So that's a little more hopeful than I thought. I thought it might be coming in a good bit later, so that's good. It's going to be a busy next couple of months. Let me just, if I could, ask sort of a rifle shot question, one to each of you, Dr. Noonan and Wyatt. Dr. Noonan, you'd mentioned about the enrollment expectations for next September. Is there any way that you feel like you would be able to, you know, poll the parents whose children were in the system and are not now about their expectations about next fall at some point during the budget process? So we would, you know, have some idea of whether enrollment is going to, you know, stay down or return, as as you said, that at mind? Is there any way we can poll those folks and and get first impression from what their plans are in September?
Thanks for the question. Actually, we don't need to poll them because we've been in touch with them throughout the entire year. And the vast majority of the people said as soon as we returned to school, they would be returning as well. In fact, we've actually seen that begin already. We've had a number of students leaving homeschool and coming back to us now in preparation, particularly at the elementary school, in preparation for our return five days a week after spring break. So we we expect that we will bounce as indicated in the numbers we've shown.
That twenty six hundred number is is you you feel like a pretty good number. What what was the enrollment this September or and and the previous September? What does twenty six hundred get us to? Does it get us back to where we were two Septembers ago or or where does that stand?
Mr. Duncan, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I'd happy happy to send that to you.
Okay, yeah, maybe that's just a question for the town hall or something like that. One other question for you. As far as catch up, by the way, I read your Friday newsletter of the, you know, road to returning in building learning. I was inspired and hopeful and, you know, good luck to you. Is there any notion that, you know, you'd you'd mentioned summer learning might be a little more robust? Is there any notion that it that it might be even more than robust? It might be, you know, a continuation essentially of the current school year, which would would give in building learning opportunities to those students who wanted them during a couple of months in the summer?
Well, first of all, our summer learning programs this summer won't be mandated. I know that that was some some question that we got from many of our community members was, were we going to mandate sort of an extended school year program? And we aren't. However, what we are going to do is target, first of all, target our summer learning programs for students who have particularly experienced learning loss or significant social emotional issues that need some extra support. We'll invite those students in first, and then we will offer from from K to twelve enrichment opportunities and students to extend and deepen their learning that in a way that will also help them. So we will have a a number of different programs that are being finalized right now with our summer school team available to our kids. But there won't be a mandated effort that would extend the school year by four weeks or six weeks like some schools around the country are doing. That just isn't isn't appropriate for the city of Falls Church.
Okay, so you feel like you'd have the financial resources as far as instruction instructors to meet whatever plans you have within the the budget that we're talking about? Is that basically the fact?
Yeah, I think I think that's fair. I think our biggest issue is going to be getting human capital. And and the reason for that is that our teachers are tired and they are, you know, having having taught in multiple formats throughout the year. We have a very low number of teachers that have have given us any interest in teaching summer programming this summer. So we'll be looking to our colleges and universities locally for recent graduates. We'll be looking at our substitute pools. We'll be looking at teachers from other school divisions to help us out. And so that that is one thing. If you know some folks that might be interested in teaching in our summer program, so please let us know because we'd like to connect with them.
Okay, all right. And congratulations, by the way, for getting your staff, teachers and so forth vaccinated. That that does establish us, I think, as a leader. And that was a a real coup to be able to pull that rabbit out of your hat. As we all know, getting folks vaccinated is proving to be a challenge, making making smed way. But that was an important, important feather in our cap, I think. One other thought, Wyatt, thank you, Dr. Noonan. One other thought, Wyatt. Following on what Ms. Hardy said about the sort of social worker option for, you know, certain service calls that the police get. The 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 funding for body cameras for the police. Some of that, a good bit of it, sounded like it was grant money. How how's that work? I mean, you're, we're going to buy, are we going to buy the body cams with that money? And how long do they last? And I guess what I'm asking is, or to what degree are we getting ourselves into an equipment and staffing expense that, you know, may be effectively, you know, low or no cost right now. But before too long will, in fact, be a embedded cost in our police department at a time when, you know, there is a lot of discussion about reorienting some of the funding priorities within the police departments for, you know, that sort of social worker overlay. I mean, what's, how we how are we working that body cams budget item?
So I think this is a discussion to have with with the chief. But some of the things that we need to be concerned about. One is managing the data, which will be significant. Two, managing public access to that data that will fall many times to the clerk to Celeste Heath to manage FOIA requests to access that data. We'll have to go through all the records to find it, so it will be responsive. There will be state laws that you have to comply with in terms of how you release that data. The, so there's a whole host of things that do go, it's not just buying the stuff. There's a lot of things to manage with it. These numbers really are just about buying the stuff. And so we do need to have that fuller discussion with the city council. That is the necessary first step. But these other dimensions to it, we need to have our eyes open as we go forward.
Okay, great. Well, I look forward to that conversation because I do think we need to dig into that pretty deep. In closing, I would just like to say thank you for the budgets that both of you have presented. Believe this is the first time in my, I think this is my eighth or ninth budget on city councils, first time that we've been able to contemplate a decrease in the property tax rate. And that comes, as Mr. Shields' presentation noted, significantly, if not largely, because of investment that we've made in the new development in the city, which is returning assessments and revenues that are helping us spread the cost of our government across a broader spread. And that's good. I I agree with Mr. Snyder that we should try to keep looking for savings and efficiencies and and see if we can't keep that progress of driving the tax rate down by a penny to at least another half penny, get rid of that silly half penny. At any rate, that and the stormwater fee are two topics that I look forward to discussing with everybody in the next couple of months. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks. Yeah, thanks to both staff and and for the city and the schools for the detailed presentation. I know putting these budgets together takes quite a bit of time. And this has been a difficult environment. I'll start on a lighter note. To, I guess, contrary to Ms. Hardy's comment, I'm actually glad that you guys are hiring a public safety aide in the police department to chase down the lost dogs and the rabid raccoons. Because I was absolutely stunned when I met with the police department several months back at how much time they spent chasing wild animals through the city. So I think compartmentalizing that makes a lot of sense. So I actually do support that. I also do support the notion of 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 hiring additional staff for mental health, social welfare, interactions as part of the policing process. So if we can find room for that, I do think that that is a, that's a worthwhile endeavor. So I'll start with questions for the city. Wyatt, can you help me out with my math here? And city, you don't have to go back on the slides. How many pennies on the tax rate would it take to get our real estate tax liability back to what it was last year? I think I saw a slide of about a million one ninety five. Is that, is my math correct based on the number that you mentioned of four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars per penny? Is that two point six on the tax rate? Two point six cents?
So Councilmember Lichtenhouse, are you talking about in terms of the median tax bill or in terms of the overall amount of spending?
Uh, overall spending. So if we're expecting through just assessment increase alone for our real estate tax revenue to grow by one million one hundred ninety five thousand dollars. And if you're, I I thought I heard a comment, at least that's what I wrote down, that one penny on the tax rate equals four hundred fifty seven thousand dollars in real estate taxes. Does that mean that if you wanted to offset the increase that it would be two point six cents?
Yeah, I haven't done that calculation myself, but your logic sounds correct.
Okay.
Ms. Bowden, is there anything you would add?
I mean, the math is correct that in order to come up with savings of one point one nine, you you would have to reduce the tax rate by two point six cents.
Okay. And then remind me again what the stormwater fee increase is expected to be. Was that five dollars per household?
That's correct. That would be for the median household in the city.
Okay. And then just to confirm what I think was answered somewhat indirectly, but additional federal money that we'll know about before April twenty second. That money can be used for capital improvements related to stormwater. I know our stormwater fees can't be used for things other than stormwater, but that one time money could be used for that, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Great.
Well, with that money will come, I'm sure, you know, books this thick of regulations, I think, if it's typical. So I haven't, we haven't gotten those yet. But what we have been told in some of the meetings, actually, that Mayor Tarter has convened with our congressional delegation is that we should be focused on capital expenditures.
Okay.
That's definitely the message that they've been delivering.
Okay. And remind me again, there was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of CIP somewhere in the budget for the schools, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And that would be eligible, correct?
It is.
And if we eliminated that hundred and twenty thousand dollar in CIP for the schools using federal money, that would offset or that would reduce the amount that the schools needed from the city from a transfer perspective, is that correct?
Well, the that funding is actually coming from the capital reserves, so it's not factored in their two point five percent transfer request. And really what's happening is we're making a one point eight million dollar contribution to capital reserves from Founders Row. And and we're taking a portion of that increase in capital reserves and now dedicating it to make sure that the schools are able to keep up with their facility maintenance needs.
Okay, let me ask it a different way, though. Is there a way to use that money to offset anything from a CIP perspective for the schools that would in turn reduce debt service or or expenses from the city? Or we could find savings elsewhere?
No, I I think maybe the question maybe for me and for the school administration would be, are there one time expenditures in your operating budget that could be replaced by using, you know, these one time dollars from the federal government? And my response on the general government side will be, we have kind of fought tooth and claw to rebuild or pay as you go within the tax rate. So that we're actually able to pave streets, we're able to take care of our buildings and that type of thing with money that's in the tax rate as opposed to having to rely on windfalls. So I I'd be careful about cutting that out of the tax rate because it's so hard to get it back in. And then you fall, you just fall behind on your maintenance once that one time money is not there. So that's the cautionary note I would make about that. I think what it would be best to do that with is to replace money that we might otherwise use debt for. And then we can just avoid that debt. And that's a perpetual benefit for the taxpayers. It's just, just one thought. We'll have more discussion on this.
Yeah, I'd I'd be interested in having that conversation. And I understand that you you've got a baseline. And I understand that you've got a baseline expense and you don't want to, for lack of a better phrase, rob Peter to pay Paul. But it's also another justification why, in some cases, tax rates never go down, right? And this is a unique situation that we are in. And I would like to look for every opportunity to provide relief to our taxpayers for, you know, loss of services, in some cases, loss of salaries on their part and jobs and other things that have resulted as part of this COVID pandemic. All right, so some questions for the schools. The step increases in the COLA, well, actually, let me ask this first. I had heard, and I think I'd heard from you all in one of the school board meetings, that were there teachers and staff that took a leave of absence this past year for either health reasons or for other reasons?
Yes, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Do we know how many? How many was that?
I'd have to go back and pull up the numbers.
Okay. And do we know, or do we know if most of them are coming back or are they being backfilled and is part of that in this budget?
There are a number of them that, well, their lines are still in there, but they will need to reapply for their positions.
Okay.
But those positions still remain.
Okay. So the step increases in the COLA raises, is that applied to every individual in the school district, teachers, staff, administration, et cetera?
All eligible employees, yes.
Okay.
The only people that would be ineligible for a step increase would be those that are on the longevity step, which is at the end of the scale.
Okay.
But they would get the COLA.
Okay. But the teachers that come back or staff that have taken a leave of absence that come back benefit from that step increase in COLA raise as well, even if they have to reapply?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And Shannon, I didn't understand the comment on the five percent comp increase that was mandated by Virginia and us only taking four percent. Is that a, is that a matching situation? What is, can you explain that further?
Sure. Or Peter, I don't know if you want to step in on this, or do you want me to do it?
I'd be happy to, if you want me to. So the governor's put in a five percent increase that needed to be, needs to be provided within the biennium. We're now in the second year of the biennium. We didn't give any raise last year, any sort of compensation increase, but we have one year now to meet the five percent threshold to be able to access the matching, the funds essentially that would allow us to support after it's gone through the funding formula to help offset the amount that would be paid to get to that five percent. We aren't able to locally increase our pay by five percent and remain within the two point five percent guidance that has been given to us. So knowing that we can't get to the full five percent, we got to four percent, which is the best we could do. So the total amount will be prorated at four fifths as opposed to one, the full five percent.
Okay. All right. Now that helps clear that up. And then how much did you, how much did you all say that you had left over from the million dollars in CARES funding that was sent to the city?
Kristen, do you have that? Is it one forty-four?
I do. So of all the CARES funding that we had previously received, which you're right, it was just about nine hundred thousand dollars, all of that funding is fully expended. We are expecting from the CARES Act two, an additional hundred and forty-four thousand, and we're currently targeting that to help us with our summer programs this summer.
Okay, great. That was my next question. So one of the IV pillars I noticed that you pull up there is closing gaps. And there has been a lot of conversation about closing learning gaps that have been lost over the last year. And Dr. Noonan, I understand that it won't be mandated, and I know that it will be on a, I guess, evaluation-based or needs-based or however you guys want to describe it. Will there be an option that allows children who may not seem to meet the need based on testing or otherwise, or however they're going to be evaluated, to opt into additional enrichment programs? Is that part of this budget?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay. So if, so for folks that are listening, if they have students that have maybe not necessarily met the criteria of really in need of closing a learning gap, they will have the ability to participate in programs in Falls Church City Public Schools this summer if they so choose?
So long as we have the staffing, yes.
Okay. Great. So that's my, that's my last question for you all, which is, because other council members done a great job of offering up resources for space, and Dr. Noonan, I've talked to you about this. I am one of those parents that want, and well, I should say one of, like, there's only a few of us, there are a lot of parents as well as staff and you all that want to get our kids back in school full-time. And I do understand that there's, you know, there's still some spacing requirements. And so, you know, I would offer as well my wholehearted support in resources and do not use this phrase lightly, but we'll move mountains to figure out what space we need to get our kids back in school full-time if it is a space issue. And so that door is certainly open, whether it's within the budget or otherwise. We will, we will help make that happen. And so you've got, you've got my one hundred percent full support to make that happen if that is a challenge that we need to overcome. I understand the logistics issue is an entirely different story, and I don't think I can help you with that personally, but would certainly be open to figuring out and finding a solution for that. So, so thank you. Is there, is there anything missing in this budget or anything that could be an additional ask to provide those human capital resources, the additional teachers and staff to offer that summer school enrichment for any student that chooses?
As I, as I indicated before, I think our biggest challenge isn't going to be finance. It's going to be getting people. So part of it is going to be developing the right sort of value proposition to get people to come. And so if that means going outside of the school division and getting other folks, then we'll, we'll do that as well.
Got it. Okay. No, I hear that. You talked about colleges, universities and others. So I guess the point is, it's, it won't be a money issue with this budget. We just got to find people. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So I think the last thing that I'll say, and this is just kind of my, my general, the lens that I'm looking through this budget for, for all things. You know, I know that, that, and we've spent some time upfront, Wyatt, you did a good job of talking about the hardships that staff, both in city and schools have endured, and I acknowledge that. But I also want us all to acknowledge the fact that, you know, the taxpayers themselves, the community have struggled mightily through this in a bunch of different ways. No one was immune, and frankly, I think everyone in the city deserves recognition that this has been a community effort to deal with the hardships associated with COVID disruption to services. I think it's important that we acknowledge that, you know, we, I think the city and the schools have done a good job. My understanding is no one was laid off as part of this. We continue to keep folks employed. You know, we have, we've offered hardship compensation, additional hardship compensation in some, in some places. And frankly, I think we've done well by doing right by our employees, and that is, that is important. And Peter, I've heard you say this before, too, that they are family. And when you run an organization as large as the public schools and Wyatt as large as the city, that you do have to take care of your family. But I also want to recognize that none of this happens without the community and the taxpayers. I mean, they pay our bills, they pay our salaries, build our schools, and this is not them, this is all of us, pave our roads, pay for salary increases. And this year has required everyone to make some really significant sacrifices. And so I want to take every opportunity in this budget to give taxpayers a break. I don't think it, it wouldn't be, it won't be financially possible. I think to give folks back, whether it's lost wages, hours, lost jobs, salary cuts that people have taken, additional expenses that they've had to incur for COVID. But I do think that we need to take that opportunity. And so I, for one, would certainly support more than a penny reduction in the tax rate. I'd support a full two point six if that's what it requires us to get our property taxes back to flat. And I would certainly support, and will be asking that we push off stormwater to look for other means to pay for that. And then I would ask both staff, city and schools, to go back and look at budgets and see if there are ways that we can tighten things up to give some relief to taxpayers. So it truly feels like that it's taken a village and that the entire family is supported here, everyone that has contributed. So that's my request, and that's kind of the tenor for my analysis of this budget going forward. But thank you all again for, for the detailed presentations and answering my questions.
Mr. Lichtenhouse, can I just make one clarifying comment? At the beginning of your questions, you thanked Mr. Shields and myself for our presentation. I just want to make sure that everybody on the council understands that the presentation tonight was done by the board chair, not by staff. And this is now the school board's budget. This is not the superintendent's budget anymore. So this, this school board has adopted their budget. So it's now in the hands of the school board, not the staff.
Good point. Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. So let's, let's move on. We, I just would like to point out as well, we do have not yet got to the business on the agenda. So we do have some other matters this evening as well. But let's go see if there are any other questions from council, any other questions from council members. And I would like to also offer this opportunity to our friends on the school board. Ms. Litten or the other folks who are present tonight from the school board are welcome to ask questions of Mr. Shields or city staff about the budget you've heard tonight. So I'll just make that opportunity an offer to you as well. All right. Well, again, this is the beginning of a process, not the end. There's plenty of opportunity for public input, additional questions from council members and the broader public, but I think it's a great start. And so we look forward to further conversations with the school board and, but this is a great way to begin this year's budget cycle. So thank you all for joining us tonight. And I'm going to ask that we take a short recess, as we've been going at this nearly two and a half hours, and request that we reconvene at nine fifty-seven after a five-minute recess. So thank you all for coming out, in particular our school friends, and we'll reconvene at nine fifty-seven after a short recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Ordinance to amend, reenact and recodify Chapter fourteen, Environment, Article three, Noise, of the Code of the City of Falls Church to remove provisions defining violations as those that disturb a reasonable person create an exception for small power equipment operation during daytime and allow longer daytime hours in commercial and industrial districts.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shields, are you handling this matter?
I will. I'll make some introductory comments, and then I'll invite Captain Rao also to report on activities over the past weekend. When the council last discussed this at work session, there was a request for some more information just in terms of how the decibel levels that are in this code, what kind of what, how they relate to the complaints that we've been getting. And, and so we will have a bit more input on that and we'll report out on kind of our experience with that, including over the past week. The request of council is to take action on this tonight so that we can have an ordinance that at least is updated so that it is, you know, some of those archaic terms are taken out. So we have an ordinance that is essentially cleaned up so that it can be used with an acknowledgement that there is interest in this and that we would continue just to monitor this. And if there's a need for changes, we would come back to the council in a reasonable period of time. I say forty-five days in the staff report if additional changes are warranted. Let me, with that brief introduction, ask Captain Rao if he would like to provide information to the council in terms of what was witnessed and experienced by the police over this past weekend?
Good evening. For this, for this weekend, beginning on Wednesday, I had police officers go out and take sound measurements, sound level readings at various venues throughout the city. A lot of, a lot of businesses were not playing music. There was very, I guess what I would say is very few instances that would have, I guess, would have been classified as a violation, meaning anything that went over sixty-five decibels based upon the zoning level of where they were at. Most of them, most of the sound readings, the venues were closed, the venues had changed their, I guess, changed the way that they were, they were playing music. But most of the readings we had were in the, were in the fifties and the sixties for decibel readings. A lot of them, like I said, they, you know, we're measuring these across the property boundary. So trying not to just call out businesses themselves, but some music playing, no wind, fifteen customers, and across the street, we're looking at fifty-five decibels. At one particular business that we've heard a lot about, another one closer towards the center of town, they were in the fifty-decibel range. And then at one point, one of those businesses closer towards the center of town actually reached sixty-eight point nine decibels, and they had some music playing outside. That being said, the police department did not receive any calls for service this weekend in relation to noise complaints. I do believe there was one complaint lodged online that has been forwarded. I don't know if that was forwarded to the council or not. But I guess from an overall standpoint, everything this weekend for the last five days was, was below, shall we say, the legal limit, all of our observations, except for one or two readings.
So Captain Rao, I do want to just thank you for your work on this and the work of the department. And I know that this has sort of been a new service that we've been asking, asking of the police department over the past couple of months, and, and all the effort on it is much appreciated. Mayor, that is the extent of our staff report tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Let's open it up to questions and comments. Keep it in mind, A, we have had extensive conversation about this and the hour. And I, to my mind, we need to get moving towards action, given how much discussion we've had to date. But are there comments or questions from anyone? Madam Clerk, is there any public comment, anyone wishing to speak on this matter tonight?
There is nothing except for what was in the written comments.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So where it stands right now is that we haven't changed anything since the last time we talked. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, Captain Rao, I appreciate the, the feedback. My concern is, this was an exceptionally cold weekend, and so I wouldn't have expected to people, to be people to have been outside, you know, enjoying entertainment. My, my concern with this ordinance, because the enforcement is coming. This has been made an issue, it's been talked about. We've gotten a ton of complaints that have been written and otherwise. However, my concern is, at the current decibel level in the business districts, not M1, which is basically industrial up on North Washington, but in the business districts in the summer, outdoor, during what I would consider entertainment hours, sixty-five is going to be setting ourselves up for a problem. I, again, I went out to Falls Church Distillers with a professional decibel reader, and sixty-five is, is, I mean, it is a loud conversation. And I expect our businesses after enforcement begins that, you know, they will, they will try to keep it reasonable, but I think it's sixty-five decibels of continuous sound, we're setting ourselves up for what I think is just an unreasonable level. I would suggest between seventy and seventy-five because I just don't think that sixty-five is reasonable, and I don't think the readings we're getting in the dead of winter are going to be indicative of what we can expect in the summer. And I just, I can't support the ordinance without a change to that decibel level.
All right. Mr. Duncan, does you have a comment?
Sorry, sorry, my cursor got disappeared. Um, excuse me. Two things. One, let me sidetrack a little bit to a vehicle, a garbage truck, a construction truck. a vehicle, um, a garbage truck, a construction truck, uh, some sort of, um, you know, persistent noise coming from a vehicle. Do we, I mean, the, the, this whole ordinance is, is a, you know, we enforce if someone calls, right? Do we have occasions, incidents where anybody calls and says, you know, there's this really noisy refuse truck or construction truck, uh, that's, you know, driving my neighborhood crazy? Is that, is that something that happens? Do we need to worry about that? Or is that just so unusual that, you know, it's not worth, you know, sweating over in this, this ordinance?
Mr. Duncan, this is a city attorney. I could just note that we have had complaints regarding refuse trucks. But usually it is related to the hours of operation and that they were operating before daytime hours when they are absolutely prohibited. So I think that's the kind of complaint we have generally gotten about noisy trucks is the hours when they're absolutely prohibited from taking out the trash.
Okay. So in, in other instances, theoretically, the, the noise is, uh, short, of short enough duration that it doesn't provoke a complaint. What about a construction, a home construction situation? Does this, uh, ordinance apply? You know, there's a teardown in the neighborhood and, you know, there's people there working from seven AM to dark or whatever hours they're permitted. And they're, you know, they're making a racket because they're building a house. Do we have an exception for that? Do we have a, some way of considering that?
For the, uh, for the police department enforcement, uh, what we do is we enforce, uh, we enforce the construction noise for the daylight hours and the nighttime hours. Uh, so in essence, what it means is that no construction, uh, no unloading of, of your vehicles, no starting of power equipment before seven AM, Monday through Friday, unless it's a holiday and nine AM, uh, before, uh, on a weekend. That right there, uh, will, it has consistently, uh, generated, uh, complaints to the police department that will involve a, an officer response to that location.
Gotcha. Once that work is underway, within the time allotted though, if the, you know, the saw or the whatever is running at higher than sixty decibels, what do we do? Do we just say, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of a particular instance where we did get a complaint from somebody who lived right next door to one of these tear downs. And I had to say, I don't know, it's the price of progress, you know? I mean, the house that's going in is going to be worth more than the one that was there. So you're in the long run going to benefit, but that's not much comfort to somebody who, you know, is working from home and hearing the saw going at eighty decibels for six or eight hours a day. Do we, do we have any recourse for a situation like that? Or is that just outside the scope of this ordinance?
I, I would say it's, uh, I'm, as I'm going through right now to get, uh, to my copy of the ordinance, I'm sorry. We, uh, for enforcement, for enforcement purposes, what we do is we, uh, that I believe there's an exception for that during daylight hours for construction.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, then that's the answer to the citizen who complains. Is there, you know, there's an exception for construction? So that's, that's a, if that's true, that's the answer to my question. Thank you for looking that up. And, um, you know, I'm kind of where Mr. Lichtenhouse is on this, I think. I mean, this is not, I think, as we move into the, uh, you know, time changes, the weather warms up. We're, we're going to be having outdoor live music in at least five or six locations around town. And, uh, that's at some level just great. I mean, we, we're establishing a reputation as a place that has, you know, live music that you're going to enjoy while you go out to have dinner and drinks. I mean, that's extraordinary, uh, considering, you know, Sleepy Falls Church. But at the same time, you know, we have to recognize that the folks living in Park Towers are not going to be happy about some of them, about the noise coming out of North Side Social. And the folks, uh, backing up the Dominion are not going to be happy about some of their noise. And distillers and Clarendons and State Theater and, you know, Dogwood and, you know, we're all packed pretty close in the year. So what I'm looking for is an ordinance that is, you know, realistic. And I just don't think sixty decibels is a realistic number. I mean, I think any and all of those venues are going to bust right through that number based on, you know, the police's readings and Ross's readings and, you know, my non-professional reading from my little decibel measure. So I would love to be able to pass an ordinance that, you know, at least doesn't put our police in the position of, you know, scrambling around all around town every Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, picking up numbers that are, that are higher than sixty decibels. Uh, at the same time, we have been talking about this one for what seems like forever. And, you know, we, we need to get something on the books. So, um, as I understand it, we can't change the decibel number without going back to first reading. So I'm sort of stuck. I'd like to move, but I don't like the way in which I'm being asked to move.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly, followed by Ms. Hardy.
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I'm, I'm still not sure exactly why we're going to adopt this ordinance the way it is. It doesn't seem like it solves the problems that we have. And it seems like it's introducing a whole other set of things. Has anyone contacted the Chamber of Commerce to get their official input onto this? Have we heard from them or have we asked them?
It was, it was referred to the Chamber of Commerce. I don't think we've gotten formal written comment back.
I think Sally, if I could cut in, I think Sally Cole's suggestion was that, you know, we do what the police have done, which is go out and measure the number. I mean, I think their notion was that they would do a walking tour and there'd be counselors present. And to the degree that they have, that's the position that I've seen. So, you know, beyond that, I can't, I can't really say. I can bring it up again tomorrow at the board meeting. But that, that's the last thing that Sally suggested.
I think a couple of people talked to Sally Cole, but I don't think the chamber legislative board was asked to consider this. So I feel like that's a big miss.
My, my understanding is that they have, at least the folks that I've talked to.
Okay.
Just haven't received the feedback, but I've heard from a couple of folks that they, that they have discussed it.
I attended the legislative committee meeting last, what was it, last Thursday? There was, it was mentioned, but there was, I don't know, it's, it's not a source of, of great, I mean, broad controversy within the chamber, I don't think, which is interesting because it certainly is, appears to be with us. I don't know. I don't know what else to say. I, you know, they're aware of it. They know we've been talking about it. They're watching some of the same, you know, meetings that we're in. And for whatever reason, they've not come down with a four-square. You know, you must do one thing or the other, I don't believe.
Right. Um, and then I guess my other question is, this ordinance doesn't say anything about the duration of music. It doesn't offer up any possibility of having to get a permit to have outdoor music. It doesn't, what's the, I mean, and, and I really appreciate that Officer Rao was out on these cold, cold nights to try to do a decibel measure. But as Mr. Lichtenhouse pointed out, it was too cold to really get the full sense of what's going on. So do we need to do it another weekend? Do we need, I feel like, just feel like we need more data. I don't, I just don't understand how this is going to solve the problem that people are complaining about. So I would be happy to defer this. But I know that many of, some members are waiting, some community members are waiting to hear what we decide so they can start to book live music. So that, that's my concern. And then, Mr. Shields, I heard something about the ABC Board? And I'm just wondering if, if the city has resolved that situation?
So the ABC Board, um, has been, uh, making, uh, visits to restaurants that have outdoor seating. Uh, the ABC Board has notified businesses that under the governor's executive orders, where there is temporary seating that has been granted simply because of COVID. It's not, wasn't there before COVID, that live entertainment is not allowed in those spaces. I have called all of our surrounding jurisdictions. And, um, to what's been reported to me is that none of our surrounding jurisdictions are allowing live entertainment in these temporary outdoor seating areas. And, and, um, so that's, uh, what we've learned through that ABC interaction.
So that would almost, uh, supersede what we're trying to do here if the ABC Board is saying that people with, uh, alcoholic beverage permits can't expand their footprint for music.
Yeah, it's possible that that's true. I mean, the ABC, uh, has tremendous sway on these matters. You know, that licensing is very important to all these establishments. So that, I think that is actually an important element of this is it's different than the noise ordinance, but it is obviously related to it in the, in this, uh, in this COVID period.
And is there anything that we can be doing to, uh, be contacting the ABC Board? That the city council can be doing or the legislative committee?
I, I think frankly, the ABC Board's going to do what the ABC Board's going to do. I am told that they have been enforcing this generally across the region. So it's not like we're being singled out. But what I am also told by the other managers is that, um, the local governments have generally been already not allowing it. And so, um, that, you know, there's not been any difference on this point between any local governments and the ABC. That's my understanding based on, uh, raising this question with, uh, our surrounding jurisdictions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hardy, followed by Ms. Hiscott. And again, let's, if we can, try to work to some kind of resolution. I, whether that's deferring it to another day or take, or moving towards action. But, uh, the hour is starting to get late. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Um, so I know we're all trying to strike the balance between in giving businesses much flexibility to recover with being reasonable to residents who live nearby. When I was reviewing the ordinance as drafted, make sure I'm understanding, what the ordinance currently does is obviously adds a reasonable person standard to make us, um, up to date on that. And then the second thing is it does increase, extend the daytime hour definition to ten thirty on Fridays, Saturdays and holidays. Is that correct, Mr. Shields?
That's correct.
And does that supersede the existing emergency powers we have where we essentially extended it to ten PM?
Yeah, well, this would be a permanent ordinance as opposed to a temporary emergency waiver, essentially that we've granted administratively under the COVID emergency.
So say Monday through Thursday would be ten PM per the COVID emergency? And then Fridays and Saturdays would be ten thirty per the ordinance? Is that how it would happen operationally?
Well, the ordinance would supersede, uh, well, yeah, your, your point is, is correct. That's right.
Okay. Uh, so from what I've understood, that ten thirty is appreciated and I think needed by our businesses. That's what I've heard, um, several of them say that they would like that flexibility. What we don't have, I think that we're all grappling with is the decibel levels. I think we've heard Ross and others kind of saying they would like it to go higher. Uh, I personally feel like I need more data to make that determination. I'm fine with the ten or ten thirty limit, but I feel like I need the complaint data essentially to be parsed out by, are we getting complaints based on time, you know, music that goes past ten or ten, ten thirty? Is it the decibel level? Is it duration where music goes on all day? And I think the offer still stands for us to go out and do a field trip to help inform that point. Um, I guess the options in front of us is we could pass this as is. And then with a commitment to revisit that decibel level once we have that field trip, um, and that data. Or we could, I guess, amend it now and have a new first and second rating. From a process perspective, Mr. Shields and Ms. McCostry, what does that mean in terms of timelines? Like if we chose one path versus the other, essentially one put us essentially two weeks later?
I think the timelines, if you all did first reading on a revised thing, you would be, uh, ahead of, um, the other option, which is the staff recommendation to go ahead and adopt it tonight and then have us come back. I do think we would probably take a couple of weeks before we came back with any, any requests for changes. I, you know, I, I think if there were any requests for changes, it probably would be strictly about the decibel levels. But to be frank with you, uh, you know, my preference and strong hope is that we won't be back for you, uh, before you with any changes. Uh, what we'll have actually done is modernize our ordinance so that we actually have a tool that we can use to work with the business community to make sure that we're striking the right balance. And I think essentially what we'd be asking is, you know, we've been administering this ordinance for thirty years, essentially, pretty well. That we just need to update it. And if you do update it, we'll continue to administer it, I'm sure, fairly. And, um, you know, if there's just unworkable provisions in it, then we would come back to council to, to let you be aware of that. We'll give you a report in any event in forty-five days. I, I'm kind of, I'm putting probably the odds are, just based on what I know so far, is that most likely we're going to find that the ordinance, uh, works satisfactorily.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I guess I still fall kind of somewhere in between the two camps where I would like more data and that visit to kind of assess decibel levels. But I think as it stands, I'm fine with the extension in time and obviously getting the reasonable person thing updated so that our officers have something to enforce. Thank you.
Ms. Hiscott, does you have a comment? Your hand was up earlier and it looks like it's down now. I don't know. Did you have a comment?
I lost part of, uh, Liddy's audio. I got disconnected for a little while, so I don't, I'm concerned that I might be repeating something. But, um, a couple of quick questions. When is the ABC Board making its decision? So we may not have, like, how many places would we not have the opportunity to have live music? If we were told we couldn't have, um, it expanding? That would include the state, the Clarendons, Dominion, like everywhere we have outdoor live music right now?
Yeah, I think most are using the temporary seating that came post-COVID. And, um, so, uh, I think it probably would apply to all. I don't know that for a fact. Some of them might have already had that seating, but I, I can't think of any actually offhand that did.
I mean, that's a huge difference. If that, if we're told that isn't happening, then we're unfortunately eliminating revenue for businesses, but fortunately eliminating noise complaints for residents. So it kind of makes it, that definitely makes a difference on how we approach this ordinance, in my opinion. And to Mary Beth's point, um, and I don't know that it's something I want to regulate. Maybe it's because it's worked up until COVID. But, uh, it sounds to me like so many of the complaints are for the duration. You know, if you have four days in a row and you have eight hours of live music playing, it doesn't matter how great they are. You don't want to have that next door to your home. So part of the data collection to me is also knowing how many days in a row and how long those, um, shows are going on. Because that makes an impact on, you know, I think most people would find it reasonable to have a one show a weekend or something like that. But I, I think a lot of this is moot if we aren't able to have music. So I guess, you know, to your point, Mayor, moving this towards something, if it fixes some of the problems that we have and we can readdress this in forty-five days with some of that data and some additional information, then, um, I could see moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So Mr. Snyder, who hasn't spoken on this matter? And then, uh, briefly, Mr. Lichtenhouse and Mr. Duncan. Mr. Snyder?
So one of the fundamental realities is, is we don't have an enforceable noise ordinance at all today, as I understand it, because of the standards. So for those who want protection, as we all do, I'm sure, for our citizens, we have nothing today. So the longer this goes on, the longer we don't have an effective enforceable noise ordinance. The second thing is that the current draft provides for some expansion for businesses. I prefer to move forward on some version of this. We need to give people some degree of certainty with a recognition that we'll come back if it's not working. So my preference would be to move forward with something tonight. Thanks.
All right. Briefly, Mr. Lichtenhouse and Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Mayor, could I, I'm sorry, just before, just to clarify, we do have the decibel standards that are in place today are enforceable. It's, there's a host of things that rely on the reasonable person standard that are not enforceable. But the decibel standards are enforceable. They haven't historically been enforced because we didn't have the noise meter equipment to use. But it, that is what can be done today.
So, so let me, let me just then ask a question. Then what's the urgency of this? I mean,
Well, Well,
I've heard the city manager and I've heard the city attorney talk about urgency and talk about enforceability. Now I've heard that it's, we do have a sound ordinance and that it's enforceable today.
I, I don't know that it's urgent, but there are unconstitutional provisions within it. So I think it is a cleanup matter that could be done simply. But I, I don't know that it's been characterized as urgent.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. I confess I was picking up some inconsistency there. I still see it. Anyway, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse, then Mr. Duncan?
Yep, two things. First, on the ABC matter, we need to get in touch with folks down in Richmond. This whole, the way this whole thing is played out is like a bad remake of Footloose. Like you can't have entertainment outside. I can't imagine that is what the governor in Richmond intended. We've got all sorts of conflicting requirements, but prohibition of entertainment in temporary outdoor areas is absolutely absurd. So I, I would, I don't know if it's a conversation with Dick Sasslaw or Marcus Simon or who's got the ear of whoever runs that, but that's something that we need to address because it's, it's just absurd and it's going to be an absolute killer for our businesses the longer that that stays in effect. Secondly, I know we've talked a lot about collecting data and getting more information, and we just don't know what we don't know. I feel comfortable in, in recommending an amendment to this. And Carol, you can tell me how this needs to play out. But my request to at least get my support, and then I would revisit this depending on the feedback that we got, would be to increase the decibel level to 75 in commercial and industrial during the hours of 5:30 to 10:30 PM, which is in alignment with the extended hour, and have that apply to Saturdays and Fridays. I think that that would get an acceptable level for, for businesses to be able to operate on the days where they're going to see most of the entertainment. The rest of it remains in effect and enforceable, and that gives our businesses some leeway. So my recommendation, I'd like to, I'd like to offer an amendment to increase the decibel level for commercial and industrial to 75 for the continuous sound just for those hours, just on those days.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
I would like to move to adopt TO 21-01 amended, as Mr. Lichtenhouse indicated.
All right. I tell you, I haven't said anything this evening, but my feeling is this. Either, I, I don't know anything about 75 decibels. I know that 65 is, to my knowledge, essentially the standard utilized by our neighbors and throughout Northern Virginia. Whether that's the right number or not, I can't say. But I certainly can't say that 10 decibels more is the right number without any data or information. For example, if nobody complains at 62, but everybody complains at 72, then to me at least, that 72 is too high. And so if we were going to pick a standard other than what's used throughout the region for the past years, I would want some information supporting that is not being in conflict with a number of neighbors and other folks. So from my own position, I'd either suggest we take some more time and figure out where there is a breakpoint. In other words, does 70 the, the point where everybody gets up in arms, or is it 85? I don't know what that number is, but I know it's somewhere because we've gotten a whole bunch of complaints on certain days from certain businesses. But it seems to me uncertain as to what, what point they come in. And so personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable going to a 75 decimal standards, standard without more information. So anyway, I would suggest if people want to do that, that we get some data and put this off two weeks. But that's just my two cents. If anyone else has anything else to say, we do have a motion. And I believe, do we have a second for the motion, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Okay.
And I just need to note that that motion would have to be to do a new first reading for that because it's not been, that's not been, the 75 level of decibels could not be adopted tonight as it's not been advertised.
Okay, so if we go with that, that's, we're basically doing a motion for a new first reading, correct?
That's what you would need to do, yes.
Okay.
We could then advertise the ordinance as amended and for a second reading.
I would alter my motion to make it refer to approve on first reading and advertise the same according to law.
Let's second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Do we have any other comment?
Mr. Mayor, this is Captain Rowan. May I speak?
Of course.
I'm not sure where that second motion went to, but beyond the fact of just noise complaints is one of the things that, I, I don't know how the standards of 65 in a business district came about. They've been a standard for a while in the city. I do know that if you go to the CDC website, that when you discuss noise, you're, you are also talking about health concerns. And prolonged exposure to 75 decibels can cause, can, can cause hearing damage. That's according to the CDC website. And, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this is not just about the annoyance that it may be to someone, that it could actually go to a health problem.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Conley, do you have a comment?
I just need to know if the, what's under consideration is to increase it to 75?
That's my opinion.
And increase the hours till 10:00 PM?
No, I think the hours already are 10:30 to my knowledge.
It's to go, it's to go to 75 continuous in business and industrial, Friday to Saturday night from 5:30 to 10:30, but that would require a first reading.
Yes.
Okay.
Because the decimal numbers are higher than we advertised.
Got it.
Is there other conversation, or should we move to our vote? All right, let's go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
No.
Motion fails four to three.
All right, do we have another motion that anyone would like to make tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TO 21-01 as, as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
And that's Ms. Hiscott, or Ms. Hardy on the second? All right, any discussion, conversation?
Can you just scroll that down? Because I wanted to reread the 45-day comment. Thank you.
And can I just have a quick refresh? So what are we approving now? This is the,
this will be the ordinance as advertised?
As advertised.
Yep. Right, with an understanding it will come back in 45 days and review it.
So just so I understand and can explain tomorrow to the board. So this does not set a start time, but has an end time of 10:30. It does not speak to any specific day of the week, so any day of the week is available. And it sets the decibel at 60. Is that right?
That's correct, although the 10:30 time is for Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's, that's the 10:30 time, but it doesn't have a start time and it doesn't have a limit on music. But the, the extended time is Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays.
And what's the non-extended time on, say, a Thursday?
9 o'clock, what it is today.
Okay, so it allows up to 60 decibels Monday, Sunday through Thursday, and then allows till 9 o'clock. And then allows that level until 10:30 on Fridays and Saturdays. Is that right?
Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. It doesn't have Fridays in it.
Doesn't have Fridays in it?
No, not in what was drafted.
Why would it have something?
I think it's Friday and Saturday night is what the ordinance has.
It should be Friday and Saturday night, not Sunday night. We don't want 10:30 on a Sunday night. My opinion.
Absolutely. And is that a, that's, I just.
Yep, we need to check that real quick. The staff report talks about Fridays and Saturday nights, but the ordinance does seem to reference Sunday nights.
Okay, so did we just pass an ordinance that says mistakenly says Saturday and Sunday as opposed to Friday and Saturday?
Well, you haven't voted yet.
No, we haven't voted yet.
I don't know why. I thought we voted this evening.
I was getting ready to vote for it, but now I can't do that, obviously, because this is not what we want.
Well, can we amend this, or is this an issue, Carol, with advertising?
I think that there, that there would be an issue on, for Fridays, extending the, the time. You could strike Sundays, leave it for Saturdays and legal holidays, and then we can add the Fridays when we come back with, with decibels.
I got, I gotta say, this thing is really turning into a muddle. I mean, to my mind, Mr. Lichtenhouse, Mr. Duncan have some good points. I just wanted some more information before I would go there. But if it looks like what we're considering approving is a muddle right now as well, I wonder if it's just better to wait a couple of weeks and, you know, do it properly and get some data as well.
Okay, so for that option, then, we would defer final action on this. I would say probably to the meeting of April, April 12th.
So, but can we even, we need to advertise Friday also, right? That, is that going to work?
Right. But I would recommend that, that staff come back to you at the next meeting with a new recommendation for first reading so that you can talk about what the decibel levels are going to be, because we don't know right now what staff would recommend on decibel levels and what council wants. We can make sure that it at least goes to the 75, so we're able to do that. But I think what we need is to make sure that council approves whatever we do on first reading. So I think we're going to need to come back to you for a new first reading.
Can we do the first reading tonight?
What's that?
Can we do the new first reading that has Friday and Saturday, correct, tonight?
We can. Do you, I mean, I would just recommend that we only do it once. So do we have the decibel level changes? Do you want, we could do a new first reading tonight that has Fridays, Saturdays, and legal holidays, and that increases the decibel level to 75 on those same days. And we can advertise that, and then you would have the option of going there at the new final, at the new second reading.
Or going lower at the second reading.
Correct. Correct. You could, you could do anything between what we have now and the 75.
Can I just ask about the 10:30, too? I thought we put the 10:30 in as a placeholder in the first reading because it was 10 o'clock, and we were going to further consider whether we wanted it to be 10:30 or stay at 10 o'clock. I haven't heard that properly discussed either.
I guess to me, this, we need to sort of keep moving forward, but I don't, we're not able to do that tonight. And so I, I would suggest we either try to pass them in a first reading with the idea that it will change or likely change. And so, for example, if we were to, to vote on 75 tonight, it's very possible, if not likely, I would want a lower limit, or at least that would be what I would support at a second reading. We can either do that, or we can just ask staff to give us some more information so we can be better informed on a, a first reading that would be more accurate or closer to what we ultimately likely will want. And I would recommend us getting on with either one of those pretty quick, since we've spent a fair amount of time tonight and past nights on this. Anyone have a preference between those two? Either passing something very broad tonight with the idea it might be more restricted or getting more data from staff so that we can make a more educated guess as to what the final number is going to be?
So, so council, I would suggest that if you would like, somebody could make a motion to approve a new first reading with the ordinance as set forth in the report. However, we changed the Saturday and Sunday nights in the daytime hours to Friday and Saturday. And you increase the decibel level on Friday and Saturday nights to 75 for advertisement purposes. And then we would keep the 10:30 in there for advertisement purposes, and that can also be reduced at adoption. If someone wants to make that motion, then I think that would give us the instructions.
The decibel number that you've set, though, I mean, would, would we, we couldn't reduce it to 70 because that's, we'd have to go the other way, right? I mean, we could say, we could say 60 and then increase it to 7, you know where I'm going.
We have, what we have today is 65. And so if we advertise 75, you can adopt anything between 65 and 75.
So, let me, this is Snyder, so I'll move, I'll move for first reading, TO 21-01 with the following changes. The dust, as you, city attorney, has indicated, that the decibel level at 75, the change in hours for Friday and Saturday to 10:30, recognizing that we could reduce either the hours or the decibel level on second reading. Is that right? Have I expressed that correctly?
That's correct.
Let's second that.
Yes, Mr. Lichtenhouse on the second. Any comments? And I guess I would just make one, just for the public's benefit, that although we're making this motion, the limits that we've set forth tonight may very well change or get lower, or at least some of us, including myself, may suggest or support a lower number. But for purposes of advertisement and moving this along, I will support the motion that's been made. Ms. Hiscott?
Can I end the 45 days or whatever we come back with? Can we, or when we come back, can we have some more data? We'll have a couple more weekends of ability to read decibel over the next two or three weekends. That'll be a lot warmer. We have more data to make those decisions. Just want to make sure we've received that.
Yeah, Mr. Shields, can you confirm that?
Yes, you know, I think we're, we're going to have some warm weather weekends coming up, and there's going to be, you know, better experience that we can bring back and report to council.
So when, when we have that data, I think the variables that we're interested in is the time of day, the duration of the music, and the decibels. So to be able to know if complaints are along any of those things that could change would be helpful for us to shape the ordinance.
And also complaints, in other words, when they come in and where?
Can I just make a, just a clarifying point here? I feel like we're, we're going about this the wrong way. It's not so much the complaints, it's more of what we feel is a reasonable decibel level. Because it's going to be difficult for staff and the police to make that judgment call because they may show up and the sound has gone down, or it's been diffused some way. I feel like it's incumbent upon us as council members to go out and say, is 75 decibels continuous across a property line at one of these known venues going to be considered reasonable? Otherwise, I feel like this is just going to continue to recycle the conversation. And I don't want the police to have to go out three times a day to Folsters, Distillers, Clarendon, State Theater, and judge weather and temperature and to try to get us the data. I feel like it's incumbent upon all of us to go out and make that, that, that determination ourselves. I'm just putting that out there because I feel like they're not going to be able to get us the data that we need.
Well, I'm happy to go out when invited. I do not have a decibel reader. I'm happy to go out and do that, and I agree with you, Ross. But it's not something I can do now.
All right, anything, anything else? We have a motion in a second. Anyone else have any comment? We do have another item tonight. All right, Madam Clerk, any public comment?
Uh, no, nothing new. We do have two motions on the table.
Did I make a motion? If I did, I would.
Mr. Snyder made a motion to approve if presented, and he also made a motion to approve with the changes, so.
I'll withdraw the first motion and go with the second motion with the understanding that we're, we're making these changes, but we may cut back depending on the data that, that we receive, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, a second question about advertising, or do we have a date for advertising it? I don't think we need it in the. I don't think we need it in the motion, but I need to know that.
Why don't you get that offline, then? If we don't need it in the motion, let's just keep moving.
Okay. I'll need that tomorrow.
The city attorney can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Are we ready?
Call the vote here.
Okay. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Schatz-Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
Yes, we have two that are together. We have TR 21-05, Resolution to amend Chapter 3 of the City of Falls Church's Comprehensive Plan to add enriching Falls Church Public Arts Section of the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, and TO 21-03, Ordinance to Establish an Arts and Cultural District in the City of Falls Church to Include Adopted Revitalization Areas and Public Land as shown on the map entitled Arts and Cultural District.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Shields, Ms. Bazemore, we can have an abbreviated a abbreviated presentation and focus on the changes that have been made?
Sure, and so this item is before council, just with a request that we take action to refer it out to boards and commissions and grant first reading on the map. And I will just note, before I turn it over to Ms. Bazemore for the staff report, that while this is an official action, an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, it's really not an effort to regulate activity. In fact, in the recommendations, it would actually call for a bit more of a permissive and promoting and celebration of public art, rather than an attempt to regulate it. And one of the comments, for example, about having churches in the district on additional thought, we thought it might actually be more helpful if we don't include churches, just to avoid any confusion on that point, and any potential concerns the churches might have. That in fact, you know, there could be some additional governmental involvement in it. But really, this really is just an attempt to promote public art. And Ms. Bazemore, if I could turn it over to you for a summary of some of the changes in response to the council comments from last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm going to start off with the request again. Tonight, City Council is requested to consider an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan that would add new policy goals and objectives to promote public art and a proposed arts and cultural districts map. Adopting this public art plan is included as a priority in the council's current two-year work plan. Council is, of course, requested to refer to the Planning Commission the proposed comp plan amendment to incorporate a public art policy and schedule a public hearing for April 12. And grant first reading, refer to the Planning Commission the proposed ordinance establishing an arts and cultural district, and of course, schedule a public hearing and second reading also on April 12. I'm getting into lines 15 of the staff report. Here we have just a quick summary and comment response matrix that kind of tackles the different questions and comments that you guys had at your work session on March 2, which was last Monday. So the first was, does the creation of an arts and cultural district affect residential use on properties? No, the arts and cultural district does not affect privately funded art on private property. Moving into the second block here, as Mr. Shields just discussed, we have taken away houses of worship on the arts and cultural districts map. There were questions about had they been notified, how have we engaged with the various houses of worship? And just in general, a request to possibly remove the houses of worship. So upon further review, staff recommends that we should not include the houses of worship in the arts and cultural districts app for the following reasons. Number one, the boundaries of the revitalization districts and public lands are established by public actions, such as comp plan amendments and land purchases. In contrast, houses of worship are private by right land uses and can shift, of course, over time. Secondly, one of the proposed strategies is to direct public art funds to the arts and cultural district. And third, nothing in the proposed language limits or otherwise advises against continuing investment in private art outside of the proposed arts and cultural districts. And then finally, we also included the comment about we're not doing public art unless we put money towards it, and here we've addressed that by saying the city currently appropriates $45,000 each year to support the arts through a competitive grant program administered by city staff and Falls Church Arts and Humanities Council. The proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment includes the following strategy on page six of the amendment text, which is providing regular funding for public art. Boards and commission review, I just want to reiterate, several boards and commissions have already seen this. The Planning Commission has seen it twice now. They saw it again in a work session last week on March 3. It's also been viewed by the Arts and Humanities Council, Architectural Advisory Board, Chamber of Commerce, VIPIS, the EDA Historical Commission, and the Historic Architectural Review Board. And now I'm going to skip several pages, Ms. Muster. I'm going to skip to page, let's see, page nine of the staff report. So getting into the staff analysis, there is something to note here, a key change. Under, well, starting at line 140, state legislation allows for four components of the public art district, including a map, zoning and permitting allowances, taxing allowances, and other incentives. I just want to point out on line 148, we have changed this. Currently, staff is not recommending any changes to the zoning and permitting process within the arts and cultural districts. So we will continue to function as we have. The main thing that staff is recommending at this time is noted on line 159, and that is establishing an arts and cultural district in the area shown on the arts and cultural districts map, which by ordinance will be included in Chapter 3, Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan by ordinance. And then wrapping up my presentation, there is no fiscal impact. And then noting our timing, we're at our first reading tonight on March 8. You guys saw it in work session on March 3. The Planning Commission is set to make their recommendation to council next week on March 17, and we're anticipating a public hearing and second reading on April 12. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Comments, questions? Anyone have any comments or questions based on what we've heard? So just to clarify, it looks like you're being just extra clear that this, in fact, is not a mandatory regulation. It's not requiring, churches are taken fully out of the legislation, and legislation, it's just really just forming a district that we hope will promote the arts, but the churches are now taken out of that. And irrespective of that, for normal property owners, this would have no binding effect. This is just for the use of art on public lands that are owned by the city or projects that are special exception projects that have put themselves in city regulation through their approval request. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Hardy?
I was actually going to ask that point and suggest that we actually clarify that on page one of the comp plan. Because right now, the definition of public art is much broader than what you articulated, Mayor, and I think to be very clear that it would exclude private property, it would exclude churches. While those are, parts of those are in this district as contemplated, they would not be under any sort of city review or regulatory process. So I do think that's worth clarifying, that under the definition on page one, so that we don't have concerns from anybody. The second thing I would actually like to see in the next draft of this is some discussion around using local artists where possible. I think we might have gotten a comment or two from other boards on that, too, so it doesn't need to be in this right now, but when it comes back for second reading, I think some commitment on our part to promote local artists would be wonderful to see.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Can we show them? Oh, Nick.
Mayor, I move to refer TR 21-05 and TO 21-03 to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation and second reading and schedule for April 12, 2021.
All right, and do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Any additional council comment? Madam Clerk? Let's go to the vote here.
Ms. McCrossbury, is that plan to do them together? Since one's an ordinance and one's a resolution?
I would vote on one at a time.
All right, so we have a motion, we have two motions. Ms. Hiscott, you were seconding both of them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's just call the vote on each one. We'll vote on them separately. So, Madam Clerk, the first item, which will be TR 21-05. Do you want to go ahead and let's vote on that one?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Schatz-Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
It will vote on TO 21-03 now. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Schatz-Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's move on now to business not on the agenda. Any standing regional committees, council liaison reports?
Wyatt, can you talk about the EDA's emergency meeting tomorrow night, just to bring council up to speed?
Sorry, I was slow on the mute button. Yeah, so counsel, I do want you to be aware that as we were gathering information and moving towards the closing on the sale or the purchase of the 302 Gibson property by the EDA, it was determined that the EDA cannot do a private mortgage for this acquisition. They can obtain public financing for it, but a private mortgage is something that the EDA cannot, is a transaction that they cannot complete. So therefore, we are working through some other options for the EDA to consider whereby if the EDA were to pay cash for the full property, we would then, through our partnership with the Fairfax County Housing Authority, or possibly through financing with the Virginia Housing Authority, or possibly with another nonprofit housing partner, be able to get the EDA reimbursed for this acquisition and still have it reserved as affordable housing. There might be some other options where the Fairfax County Housing Authority, for instance, would give financing for the project. Currently, they're offering only three-year term financing, but that might be enough time just to find out the permanent disposition of this property. And they would manage it for the EDA, but the EDA would be the title holder to the property. We're still finalizing those options, and we'll be able to give a report to the EDA on those options on Tuesday night. But the bottom line request of the EDA would be to use its land banking funds to pay cash for the full property until such alternative measures could be put into effect, and they might take as long as two to three months to get worked through with another public agency. So that is the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The EDA is planning to meet tomorrow night, Tuesday night, to discuss this. And there will be a requested motion to authorize staff to execute the transaction using cash only based on sort of the premises of what I've just reported.
Mr. Snyder?
Two quick questions. Will the city attorney be present for the EDA's discussion, number one, and number two? Is this within the charter of the EDA and the legal authority applicable to the EDA?
I will be present, and yes, the, I mean, we, the, purchasing the property for all cash and owning a facility like this is an authority facility under the EDA statutes, and so is authorized for the EDA.
Including for affordable housing?
That's correct, because only for EDAs in jurisdictions like the city where we have not created our own housing authority. But the EDA does have authority to have a facility that's for affordable housing.
Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? Reports and the like? Any last words before we adjourn? All right.
Could I ask one question before we go?
Of course.
What are we, where do we stand on vaccinations for city staff? Do we keep track of that? Are we? Where do we rank compared to other jurisdictions? Is this, now that we have teachers vaccinated and my attention shifts to city employees and to grocery store workers who seem to me like they're, at least the grocery store workers, are not at the front of mind and should be. Those of you who are spending time in regional meetings have any input on that?
So we're watching it very closely. We want to support all of our employees to get vaccinated as quickly as possible. Right now, the employees that have been vaccinated are our public safety staff and our teachers, and no others. And so we are waiting to move through the 1B populations. It was announced over the weekend that grocery store employees were sort of that next tier of the 1B group. And so that is happening, but that's not city employees. So we're waiting for those slots to open up in that one, those gradations of the 1B, basically 1B4 through 1B9. And that's where we'll have increased numbers of city employees be eligible.
All right, Vice Mayor Conley, did you have a comment? I saw your hand up.
No, I put my hand up.
Could you just keep us posted on that? Also, if grocery store worker is in the B category, so that means that it's okay for them to go on to the Fairfax site and register, and if they haven't already, and they would be given preference, is that?
That's right. When you go onto the Fairfax County site, there's a questionnaire that you answer, and what's changed, just, well, just recently is new, you know, for instance, that grocery store category is a new category that makes you eligible. But the other ones we have not yet reached that would expand the pool of city employees that are eligible. We've been lobbying for it. We believe that many of our employees, you know, for instance, the commissioner of revenue and treasurer, they are interfacing with the public extensively, our permits counter, building permits folks, our public works staff, so many of our employees are having extensive contact with the public and are not yet in that 1B categorization. But we're following the rules as they're laid out for us, but we just want to make sure that when it gets to our people, that we're ready to move.
Okay, well, that's good. Keep rattling the cage is all I could say to that. For just the John and Jane Q. public types, so you know, the folks who all registered on the 18th are basically have been served and they moved on to the 19th. I mean, I'm trying to follow all these emails and communications. Basically, if somebody comes to me and says, you know what, I signed up on January the 21st, and I haven't heard anything yet, should, is there someplace you can go to find out, okay, today, Fairfax Health is working on people who signed up as of January 20th. If you didn't sign up until the 21st, then you've still got, you know, at least another several days. Is there someplace to go to find that out without having to call somebody?
Yeah, the Fairfax County vaccination dashboard is pretty granular in terms of what it's showing in terms of sort of the big data. I don't think it says exactly what you're asking for. If I signed up on the 22nd, am I now, are we getting close to me? But it does. But it does show their progress of working through all of the numbers that have been registered. And they've also, I think, made big strides in getting back with people who have gone through their portal. I think they've been making improvements to that. It's certainly not perfect, but I think they have made a lot of progress.
And it's like, Mr. Shields, I would just add that every Sunday at noon, Fairfax Health Department is sending out an email confirmation that you're still on the list, so people aren't anxious whether that registration got lost. They also now have a checker, and so you can go in and look yourself up just to confirm you're still on there. But to Mr. Shields' point, it's not as granular that you're 400th on the 500th list, but they do list, we're now serving January 19th, so you can know which day.
Okay, well, that's, that's, and by that, I did not know. The other stuff I've been trying to extrapolate myself, but. Okay, all right, well, that's something to be able to tell people then. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snyder, then Ms. Hardy?
Sure, so maybe we could have another, yet another briefing from Fairfax County Health at a work session soon. I've heard some problems with Inova, and you can go in one way, and you get treatment one way, and you don't go in the other way. So there's some sort of communication issue there. I'd also like to know how we're doing compared to Arlington in terms of of getting people 65 and above vaccinated. And so I'm, I'm just, I think, considering all these questions tonight, we need another status report focused on where we are, what are the communication systems, what do people know, when do they know it? Not only for the first shot, but the second shot, how are they going to know? What is the one way that they can rely on? And where are we with the total amount of vaccines? The president has set a very aggressive, very positive approach, and are we in fact going to be able to meet his suggested deadline? So a lot of questions tonight from others, from myself. Maybe it's time for another status update. Thank you.
All right, I think it's a good idea. Ms. Hardy?
Yep, I like that idea from Dave. Related to that, though, I'd like to understand, based on the demographic and the data that's already published, kind of how well our various populations are doing. So for example, the last update, as of last Friday, said that we had, I think it was 1,200 or 1,360-year-olds and up that were vaccinated. Clearly, we have more than that in the population, so we're missing some. And I think it's incumbent on us to figure out how we reach those people that either are choosing not to get vaccinated, or don't know, or aren't aware. But I worry that there might be some equity issues with that, and I think looking at that demographic data could help us figure out how to get to them.
All right, thank you. Any, any other comments or requests? Any last word? All right, so we'll see if we can get an update coming up here soon. And unless there's any other comments for tonight, I would suggest maybe we adjourn, and then we'll see each other on Wednesday morning. So, any last words before we adjourn tonight?
Okay, thank you all. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.